Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, September 14th of 2021. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Warren Town Council. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. As we do at the beginning of meetings, when there have been passages in the community, we observe a moment of silence. I would just like to recognize the names of those we have lost. And after I do, we can all rise. After our moment, I think the members of the council would like to say a few words about some of those passings. So this evening, we will rise in remembrance of Brian Remy, William Davok, and Bonnie Warren. If everybody could please rise. Thank you. You can be seated. Brian Remy was an Assistant Fire Chief and a pillar of the community. I did not know him well, but I surely knew of him and I knew all about him because that was just the kind of man that he was. I would look to my right and then to my left to the members of the council who might want to say something personal on his behalf.
Thank you, Madam President. On Brian, I did know him. Excuse me. All I can say is he will be missed. He was undoubtedly the go-to guy. I would call him numerous times when I was president of Little League and he'd be like, just get me a key so I can get in there and turn on the water. So although he is gone, he will never be forgotten. And on the matter of Billy Davok, also another pillar of this community who we lost too soon and will be missed, but his legacy, as Brian's will, will continue with all the footprints that they left in the sand. And every time I go by certain areas in this community, I'll always remember both Brian and Billy. So, Madam President, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to say a few words.
All three of these people made a big impact on the town of Warren. Brian and Billy, I consider both friends. Brian and I bumped heads on political things, but he was always the first one to forget about it and, you know. But there's a big void with these three people missing that Warren's going to feel for years. I don't think anybody can fill the void that's going to be left. But it's just, you know what? They're always going to be in our memory, especially whenever we need something we can't get it done. We're going to say, damn. But they're all going to be missed.
It's hard to imagine someone who could have contributed more to our community through his service and everyone in the community knew him and knew how devoted he was. I didn't know Brian that well, but interestingly enough, when I first moved to Warren about 25 years ago, Brian was one of the first ones to drive by my house and knock on the door and say, welcome to the neighborhood. If there's anything I can do, let me go. I still remember that. John said, you know, all three of these people were pillars of the community. Bonnie Warren, which many of you probably don't know, was a professional historian and she spent countless years documenting the historic fabric of Warren. And I think that was a huge contribution to helping recognize and eventually preserve what we have here in Warren. So again, he missed and hope to keep him in our memory.
Unfortunately, going last in times like this can be difficult, but yet one thing that we all said that I'll echo, Brian was a public servant, a fireman, father, husband, friend, brother, a member of the community that accepted his participation eagerly and he gave it the same way. The other two members had their commitments to community in a different way and we mourn them as well. But the unnatural act that Brian had to endure is something that we're never going to forget. I appreciate his time here and my heart was out to you, the family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I will just say that, you know, William Davok of the Market Street Pub was a man who was everybody knew. And again, whether you knew him or not, he welcomed you in and he was always at the ready to help the community. And Bonnie was a storyteller and a flirt and a passionate preservationist. And she owned the square peg that was just a go-to destination. So the impact that all three of these lives lost, one after many years and a rich life, one too soon and one taken, will all be deeply, deeply remembered and with love and with honor. So on we press. So our first first matter is going to be a public hearing and a show cause. I would ask everybody who comes up to speak, identify yourself, speak clearly into the microphone, conduct yourself with civility, with respect and with compassion. There is a room filled with people who are grieving and who are traumatized and we need to be as respectful to this process that we must move through now and treat each other with dignity and humility. So I will ask our solicitor, Mr. DiSisto, to take over and we will follow along.
I had issue presently is a show cause hearing on the liquor license that was issued by the town of Warren to the Warren Italian American Citizens Club. And because of the incident that happened on September 2nd, it is appropriate to have a show cause hearing to determine whether or not action should be taken on that license. The club is represented by an attorney who is here tonight. And I just want to go over a few of the ground rules for a show cause hearing before we get going. The club has been notified. They are entitled to a hearing on their license where they can present evidence and witnesses. The town's presentation will be very brief tonight, as I've discussed with Mr. Bristow, who represents the club. But this is not a court hearing. So the rules that typically happen in trials in Superior Court don't pertain here. You're sitting as a quasi judicial body. So whatever you feel in the way of information is appropriate to make a determination on the license is something that you can hear. I doubt that you'll hear many objections tonight anyway. The town will be presenting two witnesses, Chief Borges and Lieutenant Verault. And they will have a brief discussion about what happened on September 2nd. Mr. Bristow will have an opportunity to ask them questions. The council will have an opportunity to ask them questions. And then Mr. Bristow can present whatever witnesses that he has. The matter is set down for a public hearing. The public will have an opportunity to speak tonight also. Now, because you're the licensing body and because having a license is a privilege, there are several things that you can do afterwards, depending on the evidence that you hear and what you think is an appropriate action, if any, on this license based on what happened on September 2nd. That can include a fine. That can include suspending a license. That can include putting conditions on the license in combination with those. And the final thing that you can do is revoke the license. And there is an appeal to this and I want you to know that. And that's to the Department of Business Regulation in the first instance. When it goes to the Department of Business Regulations, that's governed under the Administrative Procedures Act and it's considered to be what's known as a de novo hearing, which means that there's a hearing all over again in that body. If there's a further appeal, then it goes to Superior Court and finally Supreme Court if necessary. But in the first instance, because you're the local licensing authority, it is within your purview to have this show cause hearing to determine whether or not anything should be done with the license to this club. Now, does anybody have any questions for me before we begin? I'm going to start with Chief Borges.
Thank you.
I know everybody knows you, but just for purposes of the record, Chief, how long have you been a police officer in this town?
For 30 years.
How long have you been chief?
A little over a year.
Were you on duty on September 2nd?
I was.
Do you remember what happened on the afternoon of September 2nd?
Yes.
Please tell me what happened.
Well, this responded to the American Italian Club of Transire.
We were able to ascertain what happened and who, I'm sorry, we were able to ascertain who committed the homicide.
Investigation.
Not going to get into what happened afterwards on Market Street. I don't have any other questions for the chief. I just wanted to establish what took place inside the license premises. Are there any questions? Because I am going to ask him just briefly about the history of the incidents at the club.
There were witnesses to this?
Yes. Yes.
And that's ongoing investigation. Still don't have an understanding exactly of what went on.
Chief, in 2021, have there been any has there been any activity at this club other than what happened on September 2nd? Any calls from your department to this club?
Yeah, back in March, we had someone trip outside.
Okay, that wasn't a police response though, was it?
It was arresting.
I know 2020 was a COVID year. Anything in 2020?
We had just called for social distancing guideline violation.
Anything else?
It was a violation of no contact order.
Anything in 2019?
We had a intoxicated subject.
Anything else? Did it result in an arrest?
No.
Anything in 2018?
Threats via social media.
Again, did that lead to an arrest? Any other incidents in 2018? Anything in 2017?
But a lass of a wall there. So a disturbance which was done.
Any other, anything else in 2017 other than what you just said? Anything in 2016?
But a dispersal had the disturbance which resulted in simple assault. With charges of robbery, noise complaints.
Okay. Going back through the 10 years from 2015 back, is there anything else that the council needs to know?
Oh, basically the same thing, noise complaints, disturbance.
If there's no questions from the council, I'd ask Mr. Bristow to come up to the front. I'm going to yield to him and give him my microphone.
Obviously, it's very difficult. On behalf of the club. Club members are 25 of them here are extraordinary.
Yeah, may we ask you to please?
Okay, this work, thank you very much. Obviously, this is very difficult on behalf of the club members. There's at least 25 members here. And we're very cognizant of what we believe happened there and the sensitivities that Mr. DiSisto described when he first started talking about how we wanted to proceed with this hearing. But Chief, I'm going to ask you a very limited number of questions. Okay, and if I don't, you don't understand anything I ask, please immediately tell me, okay? And I'll go from there. First, Chief, prior to becoming chief of police, is it accurate to say that you were the prosecution officer in the town of Warren for a good amount of time?
Yes.
About how many years was that? Okay, and what timeframe did that encompass, please? Okay, going forward, is that correct? Yeah, I just want you to, so you were familiar with events that resulted in criminal arrests and prosecutions in the town of Warren. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Mr. DiSisto had you go through a limited timeframe in terms of whether or not there was reported criminal activity at the Edlow American Citizens Club of Warren. reported criminal activity at the Itlo American Citizens Club of Warren? And is it accurate to say that if any, that was extraordinarily limited during the time period when you were the prosecution officer for the town?
Yes.
Okay. And I want to just, if I can, reference something you said about 2019. There was an intoxic, a report of an intoxicated subject. Is that your, what your testimony was?
Yes.
Okay. And is that something that had been reported by the club or by a club member as it related to the police being put on notice that that was going on? If you know. Okay. And you don't know whether that was called in by somebody at the club. Is that correct? And is it your understanding that?
Excuse me, chief, could you please remember to speak into the microphone? Thank you.
And in 2019, is it your understanding that Chief Remy was a honorary member of the club? I don't know. Believe he was a member of the club on September 2nd, when you first got the call to arrive there? Oh, so you had no, you didn't know beforehand, or is that correct? Is there anything about any activity that you became aware of while either the prosecution officer, the deputy chief or the chief, that would cause you to believe that the the club members either tolerated or acquiesced in disorderly conduct or disorderly activity by by patrons and members of the club? There's nothing, right? And is there anything that you know about the club that would cause you to believe that they did not adequately supervise the conduct of their patrons? Just give me one second.
Okay.
Thanks. I just want to clear something up if I can, chief. I know there was an investigation that took place clearly, obviously, necessarily. Did you yourself interview any of the witnesses or was that done by someone under your command? Can you identify that member of the Warren Police? That's great. Thank you so much.
Is the council ready for Lieutenant Perrault?
Yes, thank you, chief.
Unless anybody has any more questions for the chief. Thank you, chief. Lieutenant Perrault, how long have you been a member of the Warren Police Department?
22 years.
And how long have you been a detective?
One year.
Okay. Were you on duty on September 2nd?
Yes, I was.
And can you tell us what you did on the afternoon of September 2nd broadly before we get into other matters?
Upon hearing the call for shots fired at the club, myself and the other detectives responded to the club as well. On arrival, found that there was the active shooter incident. Again, once that the shooter was located, conducted an investigation.
Okay, you you heard the what Chief Borges had to testify to, correct?
Yes.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you interview any witnesses in the course of your participation in the investigation? I know the state police are involved, but did you interview witnesses?
Yes, I interviewed, I conducted interviews along with the state police at the same time.
Okay, I'm just going to focus on one limited part of of what you did in your investigation. Did that investigation reveal that the shooter had been drinking on the license premises during the morning of September 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, and that's not a violation because it's a club license and he could do that, correct?
Correct.
But he was drinking.
Yes.
How do you know that?
Both speaking with witnesses, along with the watching the video reflected that.
Okay. Was the, did the shooter, to your knowledge, based on your investigation, was he drinking just prior to this incident taking place?
Yes.
How do you know that?
Again, the video showed him what appeared to be a beer that was opened up, placed in front of him, which he was consuming.
And did witnesses also testify to that? Did witnesses also tell you that?
Yes.
Okay. You don't know how much he consumed?
No, I don't. I wasn't able to review the whole of the video.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for Lieutenant Perrault because I want to just focus on this aspect of it because beers to the license. Does the council have any questions?
I have one. What time does the club open? What time does the club open?
They, the license provides that they can open at 6:00 in the morning.
6:00 in the morning.
They do have community there, a person, a custodian that comes in in the morning.
Do we have a timeframe on Olet, what time he was there?
Mr. Olet was there at 7:00.
7:00 AM? Do you know if he was starting to consume at that time or undetermined?
Between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00, though, it was reported that he had two beers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00, he consumed at least two beers?
The investigation is still ongoing. Is there any way to understand the state of mind of the shooter prior? And even leading up to this in the weeks before? Has that been determined? Is it through witnesses, talking to friends and acquaintances?
We've spoken with witnesses, but yes, it's still under investigation at this time.
I believe I know the answer is we haven't got any toxicology back on the shooter, whether or not he was, his BAC.
No, we have not.
Did your investigation reveal what position the shooter had with the club?
Yes, he was found to be the president of the club.
Thank you. I don't have any further, Lieutenant Perrault. If you don't, I'd ask Mr. Bristow to come back up again. If he has any questions.
All right, Lieutenant, you headed up the investigation into what occurred at the at the club that day. Is that correct?
For Warren Police, yes.
Okay. And is it accurate to say that all the members of the club who you spoke to were fully cooperative with you?
Yes, they were.
They gave you access to the club, right?
Absolutely.
Gave you keys to the club, correct? They gave you access to all the video that existed at the club. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, you understand it's the club that's the license holder, not not the president, or in this case, Michael Willelt. You understand that, correct?
Correct.
Um, were you able to ascertain during your investigation as to whether or not a handgun was kept on the premises of the Itlo American Citizens Club of Warren?
We don't believe so.
You certainly looked for a firearm, is that correct?
Yes.
And when you were speaking with these witnesses who you at least rely upon in part to supplement your observations on video, is it accurate to say that they advised you that no firearm was kept on, or a weapon of any kind was kept on the premises of the club? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And without getting into any of the details of of what happened here, is it your understanding that Mr. Willelt, after having some conversation with some members of the club, left the premises of the club and went someplace else to obtain a firearm? Is that your understanding as the investigating lieutenant?
Yes.
And is it your belief that he went to his residence, to his home?
He left the premises to achieve that item. We believe it was the best.
Do you believe that mental health was involved in anything that occurred at the club that day?
Yeah, that's, I'm not a doctor to say that.
Right. And none of the members of the club are are healthcare providers. You understand that as well, right?
As far as I know, correct.
And did you actually go inside Mr. Willelt's apartment as part of your investigation, Lieutenant?
Yes.
Okay. And how would you describe the interior of his?
I don't really think this this is relevant at all.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll.
You can.
Hundred percent withdraw. Thank you so much. I want to defer to the council. Have you spoken to any, as part of your investigation, have you spoken to any of the friends or associates of Mr. Willelt as it relates to their observations of his mental stability or health in the days immediately prior to the shooting?
Spoke with the witnesses on September.
I just want to, if I can, go to the 7:00 AM. You arrived at 7:00 and sometime between 7:00 and 10:00, you believed that he consumed two beers. Is that your testimony?
That's what was correct. That was what was reported by one of the witnesses.
Okay. And can you tell me who that witness was?
The janitor.
Okay. And did he complete a witness statement with either you and or with the Rhode Island State Police?
Yes, he did.
All right. Do you have that witness statement?
No.
Not not with you tonight, but as part of your investigative file?
None of that would be.
Transcribed, yeah.
At one point, did you say, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sitting back there doing the best I can, but did you say that you were unable to watch all of the video?
Correct.
Okay. And is this the interior video, exterior video, or both of the club?
It was both.
And is there a reason why you were unable to view all of the video?
Yes, the surveillance system was collected as evidence by Rhode Island State Police. They had difficulty accessing that due to having a password for it. Earlier this afternoon, I was able to go to the Rhode Island State Police. They advised me that they were able to access that video.
Okay. Did you ask any of the club members for the password for the video?
We did ask them.
Okay. And were you able to get it from them?
They said they did not know.
And this is a password that would have been created by Mr. Willelt?
Correct.
Nonetheless, you have been able to get into the video, the rest of the video?
Majority of it, yes.
And you just haven't had an opportunity to view it yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want to talk to you, if I can, for a moment about your conversations with with club members as part of your investigation, Lieutenant, if I can. Were any of the club members who you've spoken with not not shocked by what occurred at the at the club that day?
They were shocked about the incident.
Absolutely, right? They were shocked, all of them that you spoke to. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did any of them tell you that the Chief Remy was a was an honorary member of the club?
That he?
That Chief Remy?
Yes.
On the date of the incident was honorary member of the Itlo American Citizens Club of Warren?
They referred to him.
And did they just tell you how often he would frequent or visit the club?
Didn't give an exact amount.
They say it was on a regular basis?
He had started coming on a regular basis, yes.
And you were told that by these same witnesses who you're relying on for these other facts, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't think I have any questions to him.
Does the council have any further questions for Lieutenant Perrault?
I I do have one. Is there is, it is unequivocal who the shooter was, that Mike Willelt shot Ryan Remy and injured the other gentleman?
If you're asking me, that's correct.
Okay, there is no doubt that that is what happened. Okay.
I I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Kalenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Bristow asked you about the club's cooperation and that all the members cooperated fully and allowed you access, correct?
Yes.
So did you guys get consent to search?
They signed consent.
They signed consent to search. And if they didn't sign those consent to searches, you were prepared to do what?
Tend to the search.
You would have executed search warrants, correct? And you would have grabbed all of the stuff that you got with the cassette?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have to execute any search warrants at all?
No, it didn't.
Everything was consent to search?
Right.
Yep. Was an attorney general or an assistant attorney general assisting you guys while you were doing this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Perrault.
Thank you.
At this point, if Mr. Bristow has any witnesses, it'd be appropriate to to bring them up so that he can question, and I can ask him some questions. And then after that, we can get to the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, anybody who would like to speak in support of the Itlo American Club would come forward. You need to come to the to the podium, use the microphone, identify yourself, name and address, and speak clearly.
Evening. My name is Joseph Benidides of New York since 1968. Member of the Warren Stocker Club for 35 years. I'm a Italian club of 25 years. Both clubs are great establishments. What happened was a tragedy that nobody saw coming. We are there every day after work, a couple of beers played for, mostly the old timers come in, it's free pool. It's free budget. They play up and down their card games. It's a good asapulous fun. Ryan was a good friend of mine. He was a great guy, I gotta say he was. We all spoke together, we had a good time together. What happened was a tragedy. I think that's for his family, beautiful place. During the winter times, everybody parks in our parking lot, all the neighbors. Don't put chains up, we don't put fences up, park for three. We park for three year round. We have little gatherings, steak fries, pork dinners. And we invite everybody. Columbus Day is coming up, not going to happen, obviously. But it's a good place. What happened shouldn't have happened. And she doesn't want to know what the apartment, my friend's building, looked like. It was, he was having issues and needed help. We should have helped him, but it was too late.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello, my name's Michael Saviano. I'm the club president. And I just want everyone here to know how sad everyone at the at the club is over this whole thing. Ryan was a good friend to all of us, a great friend to me for 25 years. One of the best guys I know, friends with his family. And we just feel terrible about what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of the club? Next, we would like to hear from people who would speak on in favor of punishment to the club or punitive action towards the club. Hearing none?
I'm going to make this brief.
I'm gonna, okay.
A lot of things were said about the Italian club today in their favor. Anyone? A lot of things were said about the Italian Club today in their favor. Anyone that broke this reputation. While it has made improvements over the years. It wasn't a place I never thought my father would hang out in, but it has changed. The wrong thing happened that day.
Thank you. I think Krista Stanley wants to come forward.
Please come forward.
Evening, Madam Chair. Chris Stanley, four, two marks, three, one. One officer required. And second. Big reason why I'm here. Small town, small city. Biggest part. Shock, anger, frustration, rage. I don't mean to sit and have to make recommendations. Sad, weird position. Not that long ago, discussing other statistics in their local places. But the fact that and the things that went on that pushed that far less, murders and which crime, right? Taking the place. Something you can't get back. You can't repay Ryan Remy's service. It's a difficult time. Members of the fire department standing back there to support. People know about progressive discipline. We understand that we may not even get the results we want. On days close as we can, if it doesn't. Last month, Central Fire Company. Central Fire Company, the voice of our returns, the matter of court, you can follow the Italian character well. Please know that the members of Central Fire Company were horrified to learn that September 2nd, 2001, he survived to find 416. Six and six-year-old Assistant Fire Chief Ryan Remy dead. This indicates that the lack of violence shaping membership score, given the fact that Mrs. Chief Remy is brother firefighter and a member. It's impacted us deeply. A number of our own members responded to the tragedy that happened here. Please know that the members of Central Fire Company meeting held on September 14th. Were condemned the violence that erupted on that day. Where the council. Were failing to maintain safety. You are further moved to script corrective action since the suspect now identified, or just. Michael Willett, 37, served the president of the club. Our education grown working. Further endangerment. Murder that occurred at Italian Club has left me with deep concern for opportunity. Lost to Chief Remy. Let's just death. Your actions will do much help to the community. It's not taking your most pain. Our issue. One price will significantly, therefore. It's fine, recommend you care to consider all these. Were you actually? Wasn't clear sense of response to. Say. Chief Commissioner. Attorney. Fire chief. Brother firefighter, friend. In parallels with his life, here in my own. On the surface. Doing what he did, what he loved. That session. But he was called for. You have a weak decision. I said, we understand that there's process, procedure, aggressive, but we not getting exactly what we want, but we need hold the club accountable. Serve justice for Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and make a statement? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. You need to come forward and speak into the microphone, please.
And I don't know whether you would allow me to do this or not. I mean, I wasn't in a position to do it until I heard the public comment, but would you allow me to address the, the council on behalf of the club after all of the evidence has been presented? If the answer is no, I'll sit down. If it's yes, I, I promise I'll keep it to three to four minutes.
Actually, I think what first has to happen is a motion is going to be to close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, I do think it's appropriate to allow some brief three-minute comments by Mr. Bristow so that he can sum up what he feels should happen here. And then I'd like the opportunity for about three minutes to just say a few things on, on behalf of the police department. But I think that's appropriate.
Alrighty, so we have.
I agree with that, yeah.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, thank you. Look, I, I am here speaking, as you know, on, on behalf of the club. And what I heard during the public comment section, as well as from the witnesses who testified here, but is this the concept of condemning the violence and, and the council taking action which provides retribution? What, what happened to Chief Remy was a horrific tragedy, and there's nobody in this room, nobody in this town, so nobody in the club who thinks otherwise. But the question becomes, you know, does that warrant retribution? If that was John Smith or John Lunchpail or whoever you might want to call or label who was, who was inside that club and had those events occur to them, is it any different? Is your standard any different? Is your, is your duty any different? I just am asking the, the council as a, as a collective body to, to take the emotion out of it. I mean, what, what the allegation is, I believe, is that there's a failure on the club at some point to live up to its obligations pursuant to the license. And Chief Remy was a wonderful person. He loved the club, according to what they're telling me, and I think according to what, what folks have said. And I say this with absolute respect to his son, Robert. I mean, he was there frequently. They tell me he enjoyed it. He enjoyed the company. I don't know that you could consider one person's assessment of, of, of an entity's reputation in the community without any, any proof of that, that, that's what I thought I heard when Chief Herr's son was, was talking to him and addressing you, and he's grieving, and he should be grieving. And I understand why he feels, and I think he should feel exactly as he feels. But his dad liked the place, and his dad was there, and his dad was one of the members. And the, the members of this club, and this is my last thing, I'm going to give it to three minutes, are the community. I mean, I, before, five minutes before you all convened, I asked one of the club members to take account. And he said, well, there's at least 25 that, that he could see on a quick count. I mean, pick them out. These aren't motorcycle-wearing clums. These aren't troublemakers. These aren't people that you have to look at and say, okay, we, we need to do something about this in this community. I mean, you hear about these types of hearings in Providence, you know, in these hardcore clubs with armed security and party buses coming down from Brockton and Roxbury in the city and other places, you know, and there's, there's, there's conflicts and there's shootings and there's this horrible acts of violence that occur. I mean, you heard from the chief, it's been years before there was, you know, actionable criminal conduct conducted or resulting from anything that, that, that took place at the club before this event. This event is a result of, of what at least according to the club members is someone losing their mind. I think you only have to look at what you know about the event to understand it couldn't be anything. There's nothing else that it, that it possibly can be. So again, there's no one that doesn't condemn violence. There's no one that doesn't understand Chief Perry's contribution to this community, his reputation.
It's Brian Remy.
What did I say?
You've said Chief Perry multiple times. It's Brian Remy.
And that's my mistake. It's, it's. I hope you take what I have to say. Thank you so much. Thank you, Kevin.
The authority for a show course hearing is found in Section 3-5-23 of the Rhode Island General Laws. And I just want to read the last sentence, and that is, "If it appears to the satisfaction of the board, body, or official hearing the charges that the licensee has violated any of the provisions of this title or has permitted any of the things listed in this section, then the board, body, or official may suspend or revoke the license or enter another order." Those are your options. And I just want to read one other thing to you. It comes from a D, it comes from a DBR case in the matter of PB Management DBA Cornerstone Pub. And that's a 2018 decision from the Department of Business Regulation. That's the state board that supervises you all in your capacity as the licensee, the Board of Licenses for the Town of Warren. And that is that a licensee is responsible for disorderly conduct that arises within the premises and actions that can be linked directly or indirectly to its patrons for which it has a duty to supervise. Now, in this instance, the patron was actually the president of the club, which was charged with supervising patrons. I think that's a factor you need to consider when you make your deliberations. The second thing is, this is just one sentence. But the revocation of a liquor license is a relatively rare event. It is reserved for a severe infraction or a series of smaller infractions that rise to a level of jeopardizing public safety. In this instance, you don't have a series of smaller infractions. That typically is what happens in a revocation. There's a series of incidents over time that leads to what we heard, this progressive discipline that isn't working, and finally it leads up to the revocation. In this instance, a homicide was committed in the licensed premises, and that's what's at issue today, and that's what you have to take a look at. And the homicide was committed by the president of the club. That's a factor you have to take into account. Now, I did ask Chief Borges about the record of the club, and you know what? There, you haven't, you haven't had an action on this license for many years. You, you have in the past, but it's so remote, it really doesn't count for this hearing. And in the recent history, as you've heard from Chief Borges, really nothing has happened. So that's not a factor. The factor here is what happened on September 2nd. And one of the things you have to do when you take a look at this is the severity of the infraction. Is it serving an underage drinker? Is it a, a, a disturbance outside the club, that type of a thing? This isn't that. This is something that happened inside the club. It was a homicide, and that's something you have to take into account. I'm not so sure I would use progressive discipline in a, in a, in this instance, because you're, you're, you're at just about the worst thing that could ever happen inside a licensed premises. You know, I've spent a lot of time on this. I've looked at a lot of decisions from the Department of Business Regulation in, in case law on this. If you have any questions about the law and how it should be applied to this fact, which is not in dispute, please let me know, and I'd be happy to answer the questions. I do want to address one thing, though, that Mr. Bristow said. We all knew Brian. I didn't know him as Chief Remy. I knew him as Brian. I represented him for so many years. I got so many phone calls from him, so many visits. Great guy. And I'm very upset about this, and I know everyone else is too. But you know what? If someone else was killed in the air, it'd be the same factor. It is no difference. This was a homicide. You gotta take a look at that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Giisisto. Before we have any more discussions or comments from the council, I am prepared. I know it's unusual for me to make a motion, but I am prepared to make a motion at this time.
Do you not want to have further discussion, or are you?
We can, we can have discussion after the motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we revoke the license of the Italian American Club. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
I have, actually have a question for the solicitor. Tony, you said you, you reviewed some past cases that were brought to the DBR. Have any been brought that are similar to this? And in other words, whether, I want to make sure that whatever we do, because the DBR does have the authority to overdo anything that we do.
I, I quoted from the PB Management case, which was doing business as the Cornerstone Pub. And in that instance, the true infat, infraction was serving alcohol to minors. In this instance, the minor that was served, it was a DUI, but there was a death resulting. And, and that was the closest I could get to, to this. Now, there's been homicides, not, not well, not well signs in, inside a licensed premises. And I know that also everyone.
Was it upheld by the DBR?
It wasn't.
You may. Councilman De Pasquale?
One of the situations I find myself in here today is trying to separate myself from those who I've heard who say that there was nothing they could do. And that may have been the, the fact. If anything ever happens there to another member again, I'll have to live the fact that there's something I could do. Sad reality is, something like this can change the course of the events that none of us think about. So unfortunately, my great-grandfather was a founding member of that club. I'm probably going to be one of the five votes to close it down. Because, Joe, if I ever sit here with your family in front of me and have them look me right in the eye and say, you could have done something and you didn't, I don't know how to answer them. And unfortunately, this was a situation that I don't think any of us could have dealt with. But from this point moving on, I have to. I don't know what else to say other than that. That's where I find myself.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I struggle with this one because I, I guess question is, could it have been prevented? And I think people on one side would say, yes, it could have. I'm not sure how that, why they would answer that way, because unless we get into the details of Mr. Willett's state of mind, which is still to be determined, it's still under investigation, we don't know. Because one might have said, well, he was obviously exhibiting signs of mental illness and should have been prevented from being in the club. We don't know that. Still, that's why I asked the question, and it's still under investigation. I was curious. So could it have been prevented? I don't know. It's very hard to say. And, and I, and as Mr. Giisisto pointed out, I, I have a business on Federal Hill in Providence, and there's been many, many, many club shootings and, and a couple murders upon Federal Hill in the last couple of years. Very distressing. I, I attended a hearing and spoke against a club retaining their license and was incredibly frustrated with that board for not taking action. I, I couldn't believe that they were taking action on such a serious incident. I, I couldn't believe that they were taking action on such a serious incident. So I, I feel badly because I know that most of the members of the club. To just have a, a great club for all people, enjoy it. And in no way did they ever think this could happen, but. The fact is, it did, and. Very, the most serious incident that could happen, that we have to deal with, and I think. That's why Council President made the motion that she made.
Councilman Colinda, or?
This is. Extremely difficult, trying to balance. Vengeance with, with, with justice. And being in this seat, it's even more difficult when it's someone that, that you knew. I, I also know a lot of members of the club. But it's just a very. Difficult. You know, it's, it's trying to, to stay off of the vengeance side, it's, it's very difficult to do because. But, and after hearing all the testimony. You know, justice and vengeance are two separate things, but sometimes they can be very similar.
Councilman Colinda?
Thank you, Madam President. So I've been taking a couple of notes over here, trying to find a little timeline from when. Our solicitor submitted his two witnesses and then Mr. Bristow, you know, had his closing remarks. And some of the things that stand out to me is that it seems like the club has had a down period, then they escalate, and then they go down, and then they escalate, and they go down. And then the events on September the second that occurred that will live with me for a very long time. In Mr. Bristow's closing arguments, he mentions. Would the point be the same if it was just another individual, not somebody who was well known, and I'm paraphrasing. The answer is, is yes, we would still be sitting here having the same conversation about whether or not this license should be suspended, revoked, terminated, or, or nothing. It's not so much as it's vengeance, it's, it's more like it's justice, and. The end result has to fit the event. I'll never forget reading that text message, I had gotten out of a two hour budget meeting, I checked my phone. I get a text message from the town manager, there's an active shooter at the Itlo American Club, suspect down. And all I'm thinking to myself is, she's got to be kidding me. I'm like, this cannot be happening after two days of budget hearing meetings. That we're trying to get the school committee to do onboard, and these, how these events were connected in, in my life, so. It's appropriate that we take the right action and that it fits what happened that day. And that's why I will definitely support closing that club and revoking their license, thank you, Madam.
We all know what happened. I don't think there's anything. Other than revocation of this permit. The message that would be sent if we did anything less than this is simply not acceptable. A life was taken in violence. Another man will be. Living the rest of his life disabled and, and, and crippled. And the life of the shooter was taken through an act of personal violence. It is simply not acceptable, and we must revoke their license. All in favor?
If I simply could also want to, on the record. My vote is not an act of vengeance at all. I believe that I'm voting the way I am because of future public safety. Because my good friend Jimmy Pine, I mean, a lot of people down there I know. And I just can't look their family members in the eye, as I said earlier, if anything ever happened again, because it could have stopped today. So I vote aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Okay. The license is revoked as of now, but I want you to be aware of the fact. That there is right of appeal by the club to the Department of Business Regulation. They have the ability to ask for a stay. Of your action pending a hearing by the D B R. Okay, and I don't, I don't know if there's going to be an appeal, I don't know what they're going to do, but I just wanted to advise you of the procedure going forward. Certainly if there's action at the Department of Business Regulation, I'll let you know. If you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, I just have one, Tony. Is it similar to zoning, is there like a twenty day or ten day clock on the appeal?
No, it's much more compressed, and typically in, in matters of this nature, the appeal is taken immediately because. The license revocation takes effect immediately, it takes effect right now.
Okay.
So it's usually a matter of days as opposed to weeks.
And you'll just make sure that you'll follow up with all of that, keeping us advised?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify that. Revoking the license, but not closing the club.
That's correct, yes.
That's right, because there was comment made that we're closing the club, we are not.
No, the, the license to serve alcoholic beverages is, is revoked as of today, but the, the, the club itself is not closed, that's correct.
Thank you. Only the Department of Business Regulation can close the club.
No, this is only a license action.
Right. All right, before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to take a ten minute break. And allow the family and the other members who are here for this show cause hearing to peacefully. Leave if that is their choice, you're all welcome to stay, but we'll be back in ten minutes. Everybody have your mics turned on? They're going to speak. Already. We will proceed, the first item on the agenda is our interviews. The Conservation Commission Board, there's one position open, the applicant is not available to be here this evening, this evening to be interviewed. Unless she's here, Sherry Lynn Coria, she, okay, I didn't think so, so we will continue. Her interview until the next meeting in October, the position will remain open until then, and. That's that. The Economic Development Board, there's one alternate position, we have one applicant, Albert Federico, is Mr. Federico here? Mr. Federico, please do come forward, he is also an applicant for the alternate position on the zoning board. Mr. Federico? Yes, please speak directly into the microphone. If you would just introduce yourself, name and address, and then tell us. A little bit about why you would like to serve on the Economic Development Board.
Sure, my name's Albert Federico, I'm at fourteen Ferret Drive in Warren. New, new resident to Warren, been here about a year, and. My wife and I both currently nurses, and I'm a nurse assistant in the state of Rhode Island. Quite a couple of years, but we're getting through it. One thing that we've, that we decided on, we moved to Warren, we want to be in a small town with a great community, and that certainly seems, we certainly landed in the right place. I've worked for many local businesses around Rhode Island, originally from Connecticut. Near Anticreme, which is a cheese manufacturer in Providence, is actually a family business. And I've done a lot with them with economic development, consolidation, enable, enabling them to expand. I think that I would be very beneficial to the town in finding businesses to either create job opportunities, expand. The culture downtown, one thing we, my wife and I both love about Warren is just always something to do, and this, you definitely get bored here. And we also welcomed a new daughter in recently.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
She's amazing. And I just want to build a better community for her and for the whole.
Very good, any questions from the council?
A motion to approve.
I just wanted, just wanted to. Ask Mr. Federico if he was aware of the, the meeting times for the Economic Development Board.
Yes.
And you know the planner behind you, he kind of oversees the E D C.
So the Economic Development Board typically meets once a month at eight o'clock in the morning. And, you know, I. Mr. Federico's application was brief, but I think that as an alternate to the Economic Development Board, I anticipate there'll be some openings. Permanent coming up, so I think. So I think, versus the zoning board, I think he's more appropriate for the Economic Development Board.
Yeah, agreed.
We would agree. So we do have a motion and a second to appoint Albert Federico as an alternate to the Economic Development Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next Wednesday, eight o'clock.
Next Wednesday.
Mr. Rui will be reaching out to you.
Good luck with the baby. Congratulations.
Okay. So, next we have an interview for the zoning board of review. There is one alternate position, is David Francis here.
Good evening, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Good evening. So as, as we need you to speak directly into the microphone and just name, address and then a little bit about what you think you would bring to the zoning board.
Thank you. My name is David Francis. I live at twenty-two Pale Street. Twenty-two-year veteran of the state public administration. I've served at departments of health, food and nation and hospitals, which is now the HDDH, as well as with Department of Administration and Department of Labor Training. Through the course of my experience, I have done planning. I manage grants, current director of grants procurement and contracts with Department of Labor Healthcare. I've served several strategic planning committees at Department of Labor Training. I have a plethora of experience and it's about time that I serve the town. I have two young girls that are growing up in the town. And I'm looking around and getting gray and I decided that it's time to serve the town.
Sounds good. Have you attended any zoning board meetings?
I have not, but I follow people there when there's things of interest.
All night, seven o'clock.
Yeah, tomorrow night, yeah, we can make that, we can, we can fix that.
Yeah, again, Mr. Rui is the administrative officer for the zoning board. And should you be appointed, we'll, we would be working with him. Any questions from the council?
I just have a few. Thank you for your interest and especially when zoning board applications come up, I take a deep interest because that's where I came from. So the zoning is very dear and near to me. The meetings can be a little long. Are you prepared to, you know, get in for the long haul? I served ten years or so, I'm just kind of gray and the last president served about ten years. Yeah, the shelf life, you can give rent outs over there, but you know, we're looking for, you know, long committed individuals. It sounds like you are, you have children in our lower schools?
They go to, actually, private school.
That's fine. Yep, yep, but young kids, we like that. Yep, I see a zoning member in the crowd, so he has interest. Yeah, your qualifications seem absolutely outstanding and yeah, I would, I would definitely make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to appoint David Francis to, as an alternate to the zoning board of review, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
I pop into the meetings every now and then too. There are a lot of good friends of mine, yeah.
See it. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes. First, there's, has everybody reviewed and anybody found any issue with the minutes?
I will make a motion, we approve the August tenth, twenty-twenty-one regular scheduled meeting minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do not vote on that. I was not.
I will make a motion, we approve the August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hand of accusal.
I was absent.
Okay.
And I will make a motion, we approve the August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one executive session minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Pass them down.
No, no, he was absent. He's just.
I think he, he should be abstained.
Yeah, he's abstained. Yeah.
Abstaining, that was the case.
Yeah. Done good.
On page four, we have P one and P two, the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or issues?
I will make a motion, we pass the consent agenda of P one and P two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have ordinance, oh, one, chapter ten, harbors and vessels, article one in general. The, the second reading. Does anybody have any further questions, comments about this language?
I think I'll have them ask to cover all the questions last meeting. I will make a motion, we approve ordinance oh, one, chapter ten, harbor and vessels, article one.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next is oh, two, chapter ten, harbors and vessels, article two, harbor regulations, another second reading.
I will make a motion, we approve oh, two, harbors and vessels, article two as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. For all, you're all set. Chapter, oh, three is chapter sixteen, public safety, article one, police department. This is also a second reading. This has to do with the hiring process for lateral transfers. Mr. De Sisto, I sense you have something to say.
I'm just getting, I know there was extensive questioning at the first reading. But this has to do with hiring practices recommended by Chief Borges. And I can tell you that other departments in the state are doing this because it's such difficulty in hiring police officers.
Yeah.
You know, it looks, it looks good.
They're advertising in our local paper for other communities, are they?
I will make a motion, we approve oh, three, public safety for the hiring process for lateral transfers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is oh, four, chapter eighteen, streets and sidewalks, article one, this is the, in general, this is the first reading. Last month, we had discussion about the fact that we need some concrete language in the ordinance about who is permitted to ride a bicycle or any other kind of wheeled vehicle on a sidewalk. And some language about personal assistive mobility devices and about parking on parking any kind of motorized vehicle on a sidewalk. Have you all reviewed this? Does anybody have any questions or clarifications?
I, I just recall the other day when I was visiting you and we almost got run over by a gentleman on a bicycle flying down the sidewalk.
Yes, we did.
So this is, this is a very good ordinance and I, and I think it's a great idea. And I'll see, if he didn't have a license plate, I would have given it to you, chief.
Yeah, I stepped off my stoop the other day and two e-bikes, front and back with a, just a regular bike in the middle, were just moving down the sidewalk on my side of Water Street. And there was, there were barely no cars on the street. So it was just, it didn't make any sense. They were wearing helmets, so they were, they were being safe otherwise, but just it was ponderous to see them riding along on the sidewalk. I don't, I don't know why that would happen.
If you have a question, if I may, the resident asked about the letter C here, which is unlawful for car, store, block pedestrian access and part of full, like, any, any form of motorized over transportation. So that means someone can, cannot need a bicycle or any motorized bicycle on the sidewalk whatsoever.
No, this is, would be a motorized. So a bicycle can be parked on the sidewalk. For example, if somebody is going to a restaurant or a shop or a gallery or visiting somebody's home, they can park their bicycle, non-motorized, on the sidewalk, preferably near the building. And it would be nice if there were
Bike racks.
multitude of bike racks to secure them. But a motorized
bicycle, meaning a bicycle. Those are becoming
e-bike scooter or motorcycle. But it also could be a moped, scooter or motorcycle.
But now, now these e-bikes look like regular bikes, hard to even discern sometimes.
Those of us that are cyclists are very easy to discern.
I, but I see where Councilman Heckert's getting at. I mean, is there anything that prevent, prevents people from parking a non-motorized bicycle blocking pedestrian access? Should we take the motorized out or should we add motorized or non-motorized? Do we have another ordinance that keeps a regular bicycle from blocking access if they park it on the curb?
Yes, we have, I believe we have an ordinance in town that obstruction of sidewalks.
That's correct. If it doesn't specify bicycles, but you're not supposed to obstruct a sidewalk.
No. You know, so when I brought this issue to the council, I had the conversation with the chief and I said, it's more about an education than it is really an enforcement or, you know, issuing speeding tickets. It's just, we need to have individuals realize that if they're going to drive and operate these motorized bicycles, which are really motorcycles, they need to be in the street. They just can't operate on the sidewalk. So I, I think everything contained in the ordinance is appropriate. Yeah, I think we're good to go.
Well, it, it will be an issue of enforcement, especially in that time period where we're making it clear that it is no longer lawful for anybody over the age of thirteen to ride a bicycle of any kind on, on a sidewalk.
I just missed it.
What just happened? Yeah, so, I mean, that is a regular occurrence in my observation on Water Street. You know, people riding their bicycles on the sidewalk, which is unsafe. I mean, I, my neighbor stepped off her, out of her shop the other day and took a person out who was on a bicycle. She just didn't, didn't see them coming along at a clip and walked right into him and knocked him off. And, you know, she felt terrible, but he shouldn't have been riding his bicycle on the sidewalk. It was unsafe. I know there are those who might say it's equally or more unsafe to ride bicycles in the street, but they are, they are meant to ride with traffic in the street and not on, not on the sidewalk.
Make a motion, we approve oh, four, streets and sidewalks for the first reading as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. We move on, P three. This is a request for a kennel license from Anturgen at ninety-two Water Street. Heard them, if you could come forward, please. Introduce yourself. Yes, it is.
Hi, I'm Anturgen, I live at ninety-two Water Street.
Hello.
Hello.
Maybe I could just do a little sort of setup for this. I know you and your dogs on Water Street where you live and you may or may not be aware that subsequent to this application, there came a letter to the council that expressed concern and opposition to this kennel license being issued. And for a variety of reasons, I would say I agree because I don't believe it is your long-term intention, if, if, if you can correct me, to have four dogs, because now you know, I, I don't believe you realize that it was unlawful to have more than three dogs in a private residence, that that would require a kennel license.
I think when we originally got, I think when we got our first dog, it was, it was bedazzled, no more than four dogs. But it changed at some point over the years.
Yeah, yeah. So, so you were sort of accidentally in violation. You have recently, you know, made sure that all dogs are registered and cared for. Well, you've always cared for your dogs, but I also understand that one of the dogs is at, at an extreme age and maybe in poor health. Is that what you had shared to me?
We have a ten-year-old who's failing and an eight-year-old who's also got severe hip issues, so.
Okay.
We won't always have four dogs.
All right. I think to be fair about this, I don't think it's necessary to go through the debate of whether a kennel license is appropriate, because I really don't think that it's an appropriate thing for for Water Street where you're, it's so densely settled and, and whatnot. I know there are concerns from the, the neighbors about barking and, and, and all of that. I, you know, dogs will bark.
We don't, we don't ever, I don't, I haven't had an chance to read this, but the, the law is ten minutes, more than ten minutes of barking. Let them stay barking for more than a couple of minutes.
Well.
Can I ask?
And.
So is it your intent to get the kennel license so you'd be compliant because you want to have four dogs? Or is it your intent to actually have a dog kennel?
No, not at all.
So your intent, the reason for this is because you want to be compliant with our ordinance? So that's why you're here asking for.
Our fourth dog was what they call a foster failure. We were fostering the dog and with the intention of
Sure, I understand.
getting adopted and it fell through.
It fell through, so you're still with the fourth dog?
Right.
Okay, so if you went down to three dogs.
We're not asking for a kennel license, we don't want to have a kennel, we just.
You just want to be compliant with our ordinance? I understand, okay.
And I will say also that it's a, it's a noisy place. Too hot, peace and quiet sometimes on Water Street when it's booming and it's got kids on motorcycles, children running around, a normal everyday in-town noise. And there's a lot of other dogs. There's, there's a lot, there's a ton of new dogs, some of our neighbors across the street. All the new neighbors from the activity, from the apartment office across the street, all of them have dogs. All of them walking by our house all the time. So it's a lot more than just our dogs. We own our property. We respect our property. Love our neighborhood. We've been there a lot longer. We've lived through drug raids and motorcycle gangs and screaming children. And it is a little quieter now, but it all, part of the nature of living in town. And if you don't want to live in town, there are many of those remote areas in town that are beautiful and we're flying.
Okay, Mr. Rui.
I just want to ask the chief, Chief Borges, has there been a record of issues there at all or? The last year, one incident.
Two.
So it wasn't a noise complaint or anything, so, okay.
Our dogs were the chief partner that happened on September ALS Friday.
Yep.
Yep.
So we're deciding whether or not to give out a kennel license. This is not about the behavior of the dogs. Am I correctly saying that?
It's, it's somewhat about the, the, the whole situation was triggered by the behavior of the dogs and the observation that there were four dogs without a kennel license.
I understand, again, our decision tonight is whether or not to grant a kennel license, the behavior of dogs. Because I, I mean, I have my own opinion about that and so I, but I don't think that's what we want to end to, tonight. Whether or not to grant a kennel license.
Can I make a historical note?
You may.
In the past, there was an applicant that came in under the exact same reasons. We made sure that there were less than four dogs there after our denial. So I'm not going to look the other way for the simple fact that you happen to have four dogs and whoops, I never knew the law, because once it becomes a public record, we now know you know the law and we now know that you're going to be compliant. So if your intention isn't to ask for a kennel license, I think that's somewhat, as Cronin was almost alluding to, that, that we're not going to look at this to be in compliance.
No, no, if you just want to comply.
All right, well, I guess what I'm saying is historically, I've not ever given permission. I've not ever given permission for a kennel license to become compliancy. The kennel licenses that we've given have been because people wanted to have a kennel, wanted to either adopt, wanted to either house, and then they asked permission. In the past, the few who've come in front of us, as you are, the other way around, neighbor's input comes into play. Behavior of the dog comes into play. So I don't want anybody up here to think that that's not going to be a reality. Because that's absolutely a reality. Thank you. Can I make a suggestion here?
Yeah.
You have foster dogs.
No, we, we adopted the foster dog. That was important.
One of the dogs is about to age out.
Yes.
Okay, until. Can I, can I make a suggestion here? I actually have the you might want to continue the application for the kennel license. And refer the matter over to the animal control officer to ask Kane whether or not these dogs are in violation of section three dash thirty-three, which is nuisance baiting. And whether or not there, it wasn't a disturbance in the neighborhood. And then reduce the matter three months to find out the health of the dog.
I am comfortable with that. I, I am not, I would hate to put the applicant in a position to have to.
Yeah, no, you don't have to go down there, Madam President. Yeah. No, to choose before, no, that's, that's appropriate. Yeah.
If we continue this, does this keep any prosecution in violation at a stay while this is pending?
No. Not, the only stay of prosecution would be for the excess of dogs.
Yeah, but if they're in violation of the barking dog ordinance, then it's just like anyone else, regardless if you have four dogs or one dog.
You're essentially continuing the, the application.
Yeah.
So that the animal control office can make a proper investigation. There's not a pattern of complaints, but there has been a complaint that's come in so that it's something I think that's worth an investigation. So you can continue the matter out. Also find out how the, how the fourth dog is doing the other wise.
Yeah. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
I'm here, Councilman Dr. Minsinger. You have my correspondence repeated. I would just make this comment that separating issues of kennel license applicants addressed is difficult. The issue of the kennel license was before the council, so that's what I'm responding to. The nuisance issue can be addressed. Points. Thoughts? Definitely. My opinion on recent is enjoyment of the neighborhood by neighbors' residents. That's just my stance, like the limits. Our person's license.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minsinger. Mr. Heckert?
Thank you. Yes, we can continue this, but I want to make sure that the dog officer investigates this fully and because I I have personal experience with this and it is a nuisance. It is an annoyance. I walk by there on a regular basis and it's, it's pretty outrageous is what it is. You end up having to cross the street to avoid these barking, barking dogs. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to take anybody's dog away. But, you know, pet owners should be responsible for that. And it's, it's more than just barking for ten minutes. It's, it's barking for ten minutes and stopping and barking for another ten minutes. And so it goes on and on and on. And I just, again, if, if we continue this, I want to make sure that we, that we address that issue fully.
Madam President.
Yep.
Just so we're clear, the police chief has indicated there's been zero complaints for barking noise ordinances? So, so there's no barking? Yeah, and you're using a computer system that can go back to two thousand nineteen ninety-nine? Yeah. Yep. So, you know, there's no issue of a nuisance before the council. The only issue before the council is whether or not the applicant was going to be granted a kennel license. So I feel it is appropriate that we continue this for ninety days or sixty days. And to have the animal control officer follow up on, I don't know what he's following up on. There's no complaints of barking dogs. You know, so.
I think, I think part of this idea was to.
Yeah, check on the health. Yeah, check on the health. Yeah, but just so we're.
Mr. Cronin.
Councilman De Pasquale.
I think it's appropriate at this time to hear from whoever wants to testify because of the fact that they're here and if we were to make, have to make a decision, I don't think these people should have to come back. Their opinion is what it is. And whether they took the time to call the police in the past or not, they're here. So I think everybody should air their feelings tonight because the neighborhood's going to continue after this fact. So whatever is felt or heard by them should be felt and heard by us. So at least Ms. Turgeon can even understand what her neighbors are talking about, because if we're going to move it forward in a positive way, everybody's input should be weighed in. I think.
Mr. Solicitor.
Just want to make clear that, that my suggestion was a contingent. It's going to be continued. Refer the matter to the animal control officer for a possible violation of section three dash thirty-three, which is a nuisance for dogs. He can follow up on that. I know he's familiar with this particular.
Okay.
Just so also, my, my position is clear. I think it's also for the neighborhood's benefit for Ms. Turgeon to be able to possibly change the actions there if she agrees that what she's hearing from her neighbors is valid. And vice versa, I think communication is, is key.
I don't disagree. Is there somebody who would like to come forward and just express their, their observations, frustrations?
My name is Steve Savan. I'm at two sixty-two Water Street. Dog owner for forty years, so this isn't about not wanting dogs. It's more about the nuisance. I came prepared to talk to both section three dash thirty-three as well as three dash thirty-seven. Three dash thirty-seven, which wasn't brought up, clearly states that no person shall keep or harbor more than three dogs aged three months or older, whether or not owned by such person, except when such person is a hobby breeder of purebred dogs holding a valid kennel license. Clearly referred that that's not the case subsequent to a public hearing. So the, the fact that you're looking to continue a discussion about whether or not you're going to offer a kennel license from an applicant that clearly said she's not interested in a kennel license, that this is clearly just to have a fourth dog. Just doesn't seem right to me. And when you look at section three thirty-three, it doesn't have time limits. I think the reason being someone who walks three times a day, our dog by that area, you do need to cross the street. We've had incidences where the violence was so severe from the dog's attacking the fence that my wife actually fell to the ground and was injured because of that. And when made a comment, was told, you need to stay on the other side of the street. So this is not a once in a while thing. If you walk by and the dogs are out, you will be viciously attacked at the fence if you're on that side of the street. We don't walk that side of the street anymore. And we've been walking that area because in twenty eighteen for two years, while we're renovating our home on Water Street, we lived in the tourist building. So we were walking our dog then, past then. We now live at two sixty-two. We continue to walk down by the tourist on a daily basis and it's, it's a, it's, it's an absolute nuisance and that absolutely should be taken into consideration. All due respect to those folks. They're, they're, they're local folks, you know, that live on our street. They're our neighbors. But it, but it's a problem. And we've heard it from everyone. We know dozens of dog owners down there that walk. Warren's a very friendly dog town. There's places everywhere to, to take your dog, even have a new dog park. So I, I think that as a representative of, of the residents of Water Street and a longtime resident of the town of Warren, that you should take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savan. Would anybody else like to speak?
My name's Anthony Welly. I live at eighty-three Water Street. I, I don't want to be here this evening, but I do represent myself as the neighborhood that's across the street and hears the incessant barking and aggressive behavior of four dogs every single day, every time I walk back to the street. I have tried very openly to try to compromise. I've made several suggestions. I've told the dogs aren't tradable and I'm obvious you don't like dogs. Which is a shame, like if you liked dogs. I guess if it's about the kennel license anymore, it's obvious that I strongly oppose the license. On behalf of my landlord, who unfortunately also favor him that he's supposed to provide some people in this residential area to just not get a visit. Something else or.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Alrighty. Well, understanding that you did not come here tonight, or you would not have come here tonight seeking a kennel license because it's not your intention to breed dogs of, of any kind, but that you are currently in violation of the town ordinance. And it's not a situation where somebody just happened to know that you had four dogs and turned you in for no reason. There is consistent and unanimous opinion expressed here that the dogs are behaving in a loud, unruly and nuisance-like way. And have you made any attempts to work with the dogs? I know there are various high-pitched sound collars that you can get that will silence the dogs or bring them to attention and, and make them stop with that behavior? Have there been any attempts over the years to, to work with the dogs? Could you please come forward?
I have a little time to say that she doesn't like the noise. We have put them in the back most of the time. They're not out in the front very much anymore. The best, they like it out there. It's more active.
Right.
I feel like I should have brought backup, but they're not vicious. They're loud.
We, so we're clear. We have no vicious dog complaints before us. There's been no vicious dog complaints with the police department.
They're just, they're just.
Yeah, and, and, and truth be told, a vicious dog hearing is a completely different venue than what's before us right now.
One less dog isn't going to change how loud they are. Especially that little extra one. He's not, he's not the one, so.
This is true. So there is an issue.
It's two different things.
Right, but if, 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 without the kennel license and if you went down to three dogs, you would still have a neighborhood who was feeling whether your dogs are actually vicious or not. They are feeling preyed upon and attacked when they walk by and they shouldn't have to walk on the other side of the street when they're passing your home. They should feel comfortable and safe and, and walking by on, on, on your side of the street. So that is an issue. If we were to continue this and have the, the dog officer check in and, and maintain constant, you know, observation of what's going on there, what's going to, what's going to happen? I, what measures can you take to either not, not let the dogs in the front yard any longer? I think that's.
We haven't, we haven't been lately. That we just know that they're either we can see that.
Okay. I'm a bit confused in, in regards to what continuing this is going to do, Mr. Sisto. Since it was your advice, is it a, I mean, I, I feel it's more appropriate for potentially Ms. Turgeon to have some time to deal with her situation. But I, you know, she's not going to be asking for a kennel license in two months and this other dog might live five years. It could.
Not my advice.
Right?
I mean, it's not my advice or suggestion.
Or as.
One of the range of options that you have.
As an option. So I, I'd like to make it clear that I'm not interested in continuing a kennel license. Because I don't want to hear this down the road. It's just going to be the same story. So I, I think. Well, just so you know, that would probably have been part of the reason why you would have continued it. You would have come back and said, I don't need to have this kennel license. I've found a home. You're in a situation where you need to vacate a dog. And, and I'm not going to say that I haven't been in a position where I've told somebody that. I have. It was on Child Street. They were in an inappropriate area. The dogs are terrorizing the neighbors behind and on both sides. Unfortunately, at the time, the former dog official said, oh, just ask for a kennel license. Then you can have your dogs. No. So I'm sorry. I've known you my entire life. It doesn't change the position I'm in when I sit here having to represent everybody who lives in this town and the ordinance. So unfortunately, you're in a bit of a bind. And I hope my council members agree with me because as they say, ignorance is an excuse for the law. And unfortunately, you didn't realize when you took on that positive position of fostering that dog, unfortunately, it's not worked that way as well as your other situations. So.
Madam President.
I'm just clearing the record.
Thank you, Councilman De Pasquale, Councilman Talita.
Real quick, so the application is denied. If, if the application is denied, she is, the applicant is now non-compliant. That becomes a enforcement issue, which would go through our housing court?
We refer to the police department. Be it noticed that there's one too many dogs and one has to go. If there's not compliance, then we go to the.
Go to the house.
Municipal, not housing.
Municipal courts.
Yes.
And then the municipal court could take whatever action they so choose to take. Giving her more time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, whatever. We can't project what the municipal court's going to.
Be up to the judge.
Yeah, it's going to be up to the judge.
Be up to the judge, but it's, Mr. De Pasquale has said it. This has happened in the past. And, you know, the town has followed through enforcement to make sure that the excess dog was.
But she would still be entitled to her due process going through the municipal process.
Correct.
Yeah, which could be three months from now, we could be back here doing this all over again.
Not, not if Ben's doing his job at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one last comment from Councilman Heckert.
My, my last comment is that, yes, there's two separate issues here. Too many dogs and then the dogs are nuisance. So, and, you know, I, I understand Councilman Klein's point that there have been, you know, no reports from the public, but clearly people are reluctant to do that, to, to, to call it in. Clearly, people are wanting to do that, to 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 call it in and make an official complaint as Mr. Has. Whatever happens with this kennel license, whatever we do, uh, we still have an issue of of. According to the neighbors, uh, dogs that are aggressive and a nuisance. And I would suggest to the public, to the neighborhood, that uh. Registering your complaints uh, will help your situation if you feel that's what you want to do. So. Uh, and I I don't want people, you know. aggressively, uh, you know, reporting on you, but if they have these complaints, that's the only way that. Me as a as a council or the town can do anything about it is to have these things.
Come forward. We need to hear you at the microphone. That's okay. Chief Borges, you've not, you you referred to the the logs from the the animal control.
I didn't realize that was this. I just don't know what to do.
I don't think you did anything wrong.
Yes.
That's why it's not in the police.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could you please follow up on that? Um. I think that um. You're going to need to uh, seek uh. Another family for one of your dogs. Um, I can't imagine being in that position. I know that's really difficult. That pains me to to say that that's what needs to happen, but you're going to have to. Get yourself into a situation where you just have the three dogs. And um, you're going to need to be more responsible about the the dogs who remain in the household about, you know. Just being a respectful uh, neighbor and and keeping them safe and contained and and not a a nuisance. And um.
If we vote to deny the application. Then the animal control officer will go out there, confirm that there is four dogs. They'll issue you a notice of violation. With a certain amount of time to comply. If you don't, you will get uh, summons to municipal court. And then you'll have a court date and then you can tell the judge what's going on. If you're working on it, if it's been done or whatever, and then the judge will, from there, it's in the judge's hands what will happen.
Correct.
Yeah. So what is the, uh, do we need a motion to deny the request for a kennel license and refer the uh. Situation to the animal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is P four. Request for a class F one beverage license from Warren Heritage Foundation. Um, Alexander Scott is here and representing them. The date of the event is September eighteenth from six to ten thirty PM at one fifteen Twos Road. It is the Barn Dash. And we can also hear P five at the same time, which is the one day entertainment license for a three-piece band. Mr. Scott, please come forward. No, that's charitable donation.
It's kind of like we're putting the cart before the horse.
Alexander Scott, thirty State Street.
Good evening, Mr. Scott. So this is the annual fundraiser for the Warren Heritage Foundation, um, the class F one beverage. Uh, license. You're going to be having alcohol beverages served by whom?
By water.
And served by a.
A registered certified.
Very good. And your entertainment?
And it's gonna be Elvis and the cowpox.
Cowpox.
Yep, it's gonna be uh, light music, acoustic vocals, be strumming singing.
Right.
Inside a bar.
You have received, you have spoken to um, police, DPW, recreation, and here you are at the council. Everybody's.
Yes.
Good.
Talk with the.
Motion approved.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve.
Both of them.
P four and P five and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
I'll see you Saturday night.
P six is request for a one day entertainment license from David L. Steinoff of four one four four North Main Street in Fall River, Mass. The event is on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-one from one to six PM at the East Warren Rod and Gun Club. It is a freedom fest. And you would like to have a two-piece band. Hello?
Yes, we have a two-piece band scheduled for the uh, the event.
And. Open to police, DPW, and you're here at the council and the fire chief.
That's correct.
Time of event one six. Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve P six for the uh, one day entertainment license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if I just can ask a question? So there will be alcohol served, but inside?
Served by the club, by East Warren. They have a liquor license. We didn't bother obtaining one for much.
Okay, I just wanted the public to hear and understand that. Thank you very much.
Adolences, by the way, for the community of Warren. I only knew Brian for a short period of time since he handled the events. And it's easy to see how well respected he was and worked.
We appreciate that.
Our organization, by the way, will be presented on the bench to the East Warren Rod and Gun Club in the placate of memory of Brian. As part of the festival, we presented it that day, so I certainly thank. Thanks, people, sir.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
P seven. Is a request for outdoor seating from Cigar World LLC doing business as Scar World East at six forty-four Medicom Avenue. Is the applicant here with us?
Madam President. Madam President, we had discussed this previously that under the current executive order, we should let this continue to the end of the year under.
Yes, in fact, we did. So um, Mr. Davidson, Davidson.
Yes.
Welcome this evening. Um, as Planner Rui has just pointed out. Because of the uh, executive order allowing for outdoor seating um, until the end of the year, you are covered until then. Um, and I think it would be more appropriate for you to come back to us at that time to to seek permission for outdoor seating. Um, we do have uh, your neighbor uh, looking for a biddling license. Later on in the uh, in the agenda, and I hope that you two will be uh, partners in in your business and you 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 will all work well together. But yeah, I I would say at this time, there's no need to go through this.
How many more seats does this plan show than what's there now?
It actually, I think I jumped up to. Take a look at it. Um, it's four tables per se because, you know, when people, when people in Starbucks usually come one or two persons. So very quickly, a two-person or four-person table can be consumed by one person. Like in the morning, at nine thirty in the morning, it's just sitting. It's go on. Yeah, and there's only two coffee tables and then I went out and bought a bunch of little ten people. You know, like open air. Next day, you know, they're outside and he's from Bristol. I mean, you guys from Bristol, you guys from Warren and they're over there. So. You get four tables that just.
You have three out front or two?
We have two out front and one on the side.
One on the side, yeah.
Yeah, and then we have one that we bring indoors. So like if it's raining or something, we have room for that.
But the the, so you are looking to have eight tables outside. Currently, you only have three.
Currently, I.
You have four. And Mr. Rui, you would be.
We haven't had an opportunity to vet the additional tables. And as you said, there's an application from the budding tenant. So I mean, again, I think under the existing executive order, he can continue with the permission that we gave him. I I I haven't had a chance to consult with the fire chief or the police chief. Then the additional density of adding these tables, what that's going to be, he's close to the property line to on the north side. So I mean, my recommendation was that we allow him to continue what he's doing now and that the license comes up for renewal in. The end of the year, we revisit it at that time.
But with the uh, the the governor's order that extends to the end of the year, could he just add more tables anyway?
It's not um. An executive order anymore. It's actually the General Assembly. Uh, enacted legislation.
I'm a spoke.
Which the government did sign.
Yeah.
On it. And it extends things out to the end of the year. Basically, what it does is it tests. Uh, what uh, a licensee has through the end, through the end of the year. So I I agree with what uh. Bob had to say on this issue. I think it has to be vetted out from its own standpoint and a fire standpoint. You can grant some temporary uh, relief now under the state statute. And continuing it out to the rest of the year, but going forward, that's just going to take a little bit more legwork from the town.
So he would have to go back to zoning.
That's correct, yes.
Go back to zoning because its capacity is its capacity, right? So we can.
Can't take out.
Yeah, 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 you can't. No, yeah, you just see the capacity is your capacity.
Yes.
But um, so it looks like you were looking up at the eight. We can kind of find a compromise somewhere in between to give him some relief now.
You you have wide discretion now, but it only goes to December thirty first.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I don't have an issue giving them what he proposed till December thirty first. And by that time, hopefully, he gets his ducks in a row and gets through zoning and does what he has to do.
I I don't either. It's just that the planner brought up a point of of boundaries. Correct. Yeah, correct. And what's the number? Oh, do you know what's the number for you now?
Uh, it's twenty eight inside.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
So you would.
So it's twenty eight total.
So twenty then inside if you do eight outside.
Right, correct.
But I I I could add more. I mean, I want it down actually. Right now, I only have twelve more stairs.
Yep.
I can add more, but just because. If the situation were it, it's not comfortable. It'd be pretty shocking. There's always somebody in that bar.
Yes.
And so I I'm trying to manage the volume of business that we're.
So we got, wait, we're twelve at the bar.
I got twelve and then eight leather chairs.
So that's twenty. So you can get, yeah.
But I can add more.
So four outside, so that's twenty four. So. Yeah, we can't go beyond twenty eight, right, Tony?
The other thing too is when he originally got his uh. Uh, relief from the zoning board, and one of the conditions was uh, no orders uh, outdoor. Yeah, from the cigars. So he's gonna have to go back anyway to the zoning board to get that amended out if this plan is to go forward.
I I I think I understand you, the one uh, you said you'd like to uh, to upgrade basically. Your seating arrangements and, you know, but you don't, you would like to invest money in. Come up against the backstop, but unfortunately. Going money. I think it's just.
No, that's a joke.
Try it. Buy any more temporary heaters or any more plexiglass. That's why.
Well, understanding that you will need zoning relief to expand once the end of the year. Happens, there doesn't, it doesn't make much sense for us to go over the top here in 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 our uh. Motion this evening, uh, but I would agree that approving. Six tables outside.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six tables outside um, for now and maintain your occupancy limits. And then in the meantime, uh, get yourself uh, on the docket for zoning and see if they will grant you that relief. That will be up to them.
I I will make a motion that we approve the uh, six tables outside, but still limiting the twenty-eight person occupancy. Overall, inside and outside.
I'll second that.
Before we vote, there have 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 there.
It's your occupancy.
It's it's gonna be set by the fire department. It's gonna depend on the square footage.
Yeah.
And if it's sitting, it's gonna be fourteen square foot per. Occupant.
She's in good shape.
Yeah.
So how about not to exceed the posted occupancy by the fire department?
Yeah.
I'll amend the motion to say not exceed the posted occupancy by the fire department.
You're welcome.
And further, have there been any complaints about odor? There have not. Okay. So we have a.
Not right now, you don't. They're on a major renovation.
We have a motion and a second. And if you could reclarify that for myself.
My motion was to approve the six exterior tables. But not the total occupancy of inside and outside, not to exceed the posted occupancy of the fire monitor.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Good luck. Good luck. You're doing a nice job. Thank you.
P eight is the request for a mobile food establishment permit for Poppin' Minis, R.I. at one thirty-four Westwood Avenue in Cranston is. Are the Poppin' Minis people here? Come on. Now, introduce yourself, please.
Good evening.
Christine. The, could you spell your last name? Okay, and what are Poppin' Minis? Okay, you make them all yourselves?
Yes.
On the track. Okay.
So on the application, it has listed Ramon Matalvo. Okay.
How you doing?
Okay.
Already.
He knows who the boss is.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, bring samples next time.
They're they're.
I'm sorry.
They've got their state uh, registration. I'll make a motion. We approve the uh. Uh, likes for the request for a mobile food establishment permit for Poppin' Minis.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck. You're welcome. Good luck to you.
P nine, request for a biddling license from Ally Rena Rise LLC doing business as U-R. P nine, request for a vitaling license from Ally Rena Rise LLC, doing business as U Rise Nutrition at six forty-four Medicom Avenue.
See you guys doing a lot of work in that building.
We've done so much work, yeah. Um, I'm Alicia Franco, this is my cousin Corina, Alyona.
Hello, Corina.
That's where you get the Ally Rena from.
I like it.
Got it.
So yeah, so we're actually just continuing what they're already, which was a nutrition spot for shake, please, and healthier options of, of waffles, healthy donuts, and stuff like that. So to continue what was going on, but different name and different way.
What's a healthy donut?
Um, so it's made with protein instead of like the, you know, flour and the yeast and all that other stuff, so it's made with protein options, uh, that have less sugar and less, like, you know.
It's carbs? Like a tofu doughnut?
So we take what we use to make the shake, we put it together basically the same way we would, except we take the ice out. Okay, yeah, they have a baked option for the protein that has a lot less sugar and less fat.
Want to try?
Yeah, we left cards and you break them and you first.
Yeah, we saw. Thank you.
I will make a motion, we approve the vitaling license for Ally Rena Rise LLC, but U Rise Nutrition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When you guys open?
Good luck.
Good luck.
Can they, can they do that? Oh. Good. Good luck.
So tomorrow it is.
We'll come in, we'll come in for a visit then. Good luck, good luck, good luck.
Have a cigar and a donut.
Perfect world. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, uh, correspondence, uh, does anybody have any question or need to pull any of these? Okay, here now, for that, old business, O B one, discussion and action and approval of application and certificate of acceptance forms from the tree commission. So we have the application here that, uh, would protect a tree that is fifty-four inches in diameter above grade, um, this has been discussed at a previous council meeting. Has everybody reviewed this application? Have any questions?
Anthony reviewed this, and I'll make a motion when we approve the, uh, application for the certificate of acceptance, acceptance forms from the tree commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This will be, this application, um, could be picked up at the clerk's office and can also be filled out online. All right.
Yeah, I just, no, this is, this is trees on private property, so a private property owner can protect a tree in their, in their own yard, that's the goal of this.
Like you.
Well, thank you.
Did you fill your form out yet? I, I'm just about to.
Oh, okay. Hi, Jenny.
There is another form that would be prepared. That would be once the trees accepted by the commission, there would then be a document. I can, which is...
Mr. De Sisto, you have been...
He just duly noted.
Directed to do so.
Yep.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Have a good night. Oh.
Yeah, she'll be back. N B two, um, this was to be an update from the Warren Harbor Management Commission regarding rights of way, but it was, uh, requested to continue to next month, and I...
You skipped right over O B two.
Oh, I went from O B one to N B.
O B one and O B two.
Yeah, it's been an evening. O B two, discussion and action, and authorization for town council president to sign agreement between the town of Warren and the Warren Land Conservation Trust regarding kayak rack at Maple Road. This is Jenny Flanigan, is... Thank you. Uh, Mr. De Sisto? You have reviewed the, uh, the applicants, uh, the application and the documents and the deeds and the maps, and what is your opinion here? Please come forward, um, introduce yourself, your address, name.
Thank you, Tony. Lee Traiman, T R A I, Buzen Boy, M A N, thirty Maple Road in Warren, or Tuition. Not sure if you've driven down there recently, but it's the last house in the left just before Tucker and Christine. We, my wife and I purchased this property in the fall of ninety-eight, started construction on the home in the spring of ninety-nine, in two thousand, in June two thousand. And with full knowledge that there was, at the time, and I can say today, a right-of-way that would give public access to the end of Maple Road. Here we are twenty-one years later, we have what I might describe as a, you build it and they will come. So what's my concern, and I'm also speaking not only behalf of Tucker's estate and Christine Wright, also, uh, John LaSalle Barker, who many of you may know, also, uh, living with us at the second dead end of Dead End Road. This right-of-way, this public access, has been this little gem, this little secret for quite a long time. And it became more noteworthy when the land trust, much to our surprise, all of a sudden developed this couple hundred square feet at the very end on the left side of Maple Road, where I have no idea how it escaped D E M or, uh, any other approval, where noteworthy, I'm sure all of you familiar, you can't move a weed without D E M. And in addition to that, the website for the land trust is noteworthy, saying that there was consultation with D E M and the town of Warren. I've been before this, not the town council, but zoning board in the past, where it's my understanding that if something is going to occur that may affect either a butters or persons of interest or folks on the road, for lack of a better phrase, that they must be notified and to give opinion for something is approved. And I just don't understand how, literally, we all woke up one day and there was a change to the end of Maple Road. And so before we get to, can we put up a kayak rack? Let's get to how this really occurred and what is the, literally, the what affects what affects what. So what do we have now? We have more litter, we have more nip bottles, we have needles, we have little white envelopes with powder, we have parties, we have fun. True, true. Ask any resident on Maple Road who have volunteered their time to go down and clean up all of this. We have, pardon me, it's my age, hooligans and ruffians. We have parties, we have fires, we had, let's see, chief, didn't we have, a woman who drive down the end of Maple Road and turn right onto the beach and then had a vehicle in the water? Well, isn't that relevant? It's relevant because we have a responsibility to our citizens to let the first responders have access to that area to do what they need to do. And now we have Christine Wright having to put up a fence to protect her property where prior to that, folks with out-of-state plates or local plates would drive onto her property and, and run over her bushes and, and shrubs and so on, and so now we have much less access. And yet we're inviting an opportunity for parking and potentially a kayak rack that would even further inhibit the opportunity for first responders to do what they need to do.
There's a lot of them.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Hinterstwally, it's important, please, that you understand the backstory, and please don't discount the overarching issues that affect all of the residents on Maple Road, where Maple Road is now a, a, a throughway, which is less wide than my driveway, which needed to be a certain width based on the then building inspector when I built my property. So we have several safety issues.
Clarification, the question. If I know you, under, underestimated what you, what you do. I wanted to get your questions. Because I thought that that's how this all began. But you asked about zoning and how this began when they woke up there.
Is the town of Warren not responsible, whether I pay what I pay in property taxes or I just pay a dollar? Is the town of Warren not responsible for the safety, the viability, the, the commitment to its citizens and residents in town of Warren? If the answer is yes, then someone please explain to me how it is we can even enter to a kayak rack before we address how it all came to be in the first place?
Can I just...
And all of the overarching issues.
Can I just stop you for a second, just real quick?
Please.
Okay. So if I'm grabbing your takeaway, your concern, not the only concern, but one of your primary concerns is access, public safety, and if there's a kayak rack there, you don't feel the first responders will be able to get to where they need to go?
No, sir, that is simply a byproduct. No. If we back up several steps.
Okay.
To how this, again, it should give me the repetition, build it and they will come. We now have a parking area that did not exist before. And it's alleged that the town of Warren approved that it was okay, and D E M said it was okay, yet no one else was notified to give any kind of a commentary, but, okay, fine, but here we are.
Okay.
Okay, now, on, on that question.
Just a minute.
Yes, so here's my point, sir. Don't worry, I think you, here's my point. How can one move forward on the last chapter of the book, before one tries to address how the first chapters of the book were written?
Okay, here's what we're gonna do. Let's go question by question. Mr. Ruly.
Madam President, so we had a survey done because there were some issues with respect to the parking that the rights, uh, had raised, and the rights had been putting up no parking signs without authorization, so the survey established what the road... I understand that, that wasn't what I said.
Okay.
So you don't, don't interrupt me again. So we established where the, the, the town right-of-way was established, and the rights had put up no parking signs where they didn't have any authorization to do so. The establishment of a parking area or kayak rack doesn't require a zoning hearing, it doesn't require notice to a butters, they're not permanent structures. So, and there was a C R M C ascent issued for the establishment of that area, so there would have been notice to a butters and notice to the public in a public hearing presumably, that's within the proving, starts, that's not within the proving of the town, so if the gentleman has an exception, then he can raise that with C R M C, but the, the right-of-way has been established and it's been established, and there are boundary, uh, markers and monuments to, it pins to establish what the road boundary is, and as Mr. De Sisto said, initially extended to Mount Hope Bay, probably been eroded over time.
Okay. I'm going to just ask that everybody be civil, take turns speaking, listen. Do not interrupt anybody. And then we can get through this.
Yeah, please respond.
You may respond.
Thank you. With regard to the right-of-way, challenging... And challenging is, the right-of-way doesn't understand to the left side. The land trust has, in my opinion, unilaterally modified that area by moving brushes, moving stones, bushes and stones, and putting in a parking area and posting its own sign. Now, whether that was their right just before... I think challenge. What I'm challenging is, the net result, build it, they will come. And here we have, in my opinion, public safety issue for Maple Road, we have an issue with first responders not being able to have the area that they need to have, and additional, uh, activity, for lack of a better word, that did not used to exist, which further talks, further goes to litter and, and degradation of, I think the land trust exists for, which is a preservation and, and, uh, ability for folks to use it, but in what context of these things are being used?
Okay, if I may, have there, are police or fire, have you, um, discovered that it is not, uh, passable there if there were... discovered that it is not passable there? If there was an emergency, can you still maneuver vehicles?
To my knowledge, there have been repeated phone calls from complaints to the police department in request for John Justice occurred 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, so, but, but safety. Okay. The Warren Police Department is available and will respond to calls. The fire department, I am looking at you, Mr. Cabral, as a member. And the parking area and the place where the kayak racks might go, it's not there, but the space that it was, was not
It did not exist at the time.
Right, but it wasn't broached in getting all of these vehicles in and out. A bush was
No, that was a different situation.
Okay.
If they've got no place to go, they've got to go someplace. And if you've been to Tucker and Christine Wright's property, there was only that area. So no damage, to my knowledge, no damage was done to her property. Yet, at the end of the day, it's a limited area in any event for access. And if the land trust is allowed to allow two parking spaces without any prohibition on timing, without any accountability.
We haven't.
And in addition to, no, if I may, just a double step ahead, a kayak rack that I just don't believe where the first responders would not be encumbered. But the point is, we have several mitigating, several issues that mitigate, pardon me, we have several issues that impact the overall end result. And if the end result is that we have more opportunity than we had before, then what is the land trust doing? What is the town of Warren endorsing? And with respect, if it was notification to the interested parties by CRMC or D M, I mean, almost never got it.
Okay, well, we are here now and everybody knows now.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I would submit that it was that our rescue, fire and rescue had no problem getting down there.
At that moment.
At that moment. But they also did not go on to the property line where the parking and the kayak rack might be. So if it were there, that wouldn't have made any difference, that car and the person would have been towed out and emergency vehicles would have have made their way down there. I, that's that.
Could I just add something?
Sure.
To take into geographical effect, the bottom of Bridge Street goes straight down, sidewalks on each side, houses on each side, Company Street, straight down to the river, sidewalks and houses. So you're entitled to your opinion and I appreciate the opportunity to hear it. Just so you know, we have a lot of streets in town that dead end with access to the water that not only have sidewalks on each side, but in some cases have houses right on each side. So to think about an open landing as being an encumberment to our police and fire, I would have to disagree.
Yeah, please respond.
Sure.
So it's an accurate analogy. In those areas of town that you mentioned, it's much more visible, tremendous lighting and sidewalks, as you mentioned, houses, as you mentioned. The opportunity to, for lack of a better phrase, enjoy illicit or criminal activity is not so prevalent. If you're coming down to the end of the highway, one of the because it's
Okay.
It's dark and there's only a couple of us that have an opportunity to
Okay.
In addition to that, if I may, ma'am.
We've, no, you may not, excuse me, sir, no, you, Mr. Trademan, you can't. We've heard this example and this a number of times now. The kayak rack is not even there yet, but you're experiencing these problems. So that clearly means it has nothing to do with the land trust or some future kayak rack. They have nothing to do with it. There's more people going down there because they have, the secret is out. There are legal access, there is legal access right away to the water. People have discovered it and they're going down there.
Then what will this body do to protect its citizens and towns?
We're doing it. When you have a, when you have a problem, when you have an issue with somebody coming down there and and creating a nuisance, you call the police and they come down there and they address it. I do not believe that the addition of a kayak rack is going to increase that type of behavior. In fact, it might calm it. I believe it could deter it because I think people will say, oh, stuff is going on down here, there's no more room for me. Kayakers, that one of your, your Tuusit citizens writes a weekly article in the paper about the joys of kayaking on the water down there. So is that for all or just some? And as far as I know, from what I've heard for the applicants, are mostly people from Tuusit. Those are the people who have already reserved space in anticipation of this kayak rack going up. So I really don't under, I don't see the connection of illicit behavior, dangerous behavior, littering and whatnot. That is a problem. It's a problem in my, I live in the beautiful historic downtown neighborhood. And there are nips and there are Dunkin' Donuts things and there's all that kind of stuff all over the place and it makes me crazy. I own a home, I own a business. I pick up, I give the dirty look to anybody who I see throwing stuff and but that's not kayakers and it's not the land trust who is doing that. There's no connection.
I agree with everything you said. I truly do. I respectfully suggest that you're missing the point. If I may, please, if I may, to close on this. I'm only here tonight in a reactive capacity. There was never an opportunity to be proactive to to address the issue that has exacerbated something that may inevitably have happened to anyone. But I'm not disputing the public access.
Okay, but there has been ample opportunity and it has been exercised.
When, ma'am?
We've received calls, we've received emails, we've received letters, we've read it all, we've taken it into consideration. The, there have been public, there have been agenda items on council meetings about the kayak rack and the land trust.
It's not the kayak rack, Madam President. It's how did the opportunity arrive to allow the kayak rack to occur? We won't literally wake up one day and all of a sudden there was this space at the end of Maple Road. And I, and the website of the land trust said, well, the town approval and DEM approval, and here's what we did.
Okay, so, Ms.
They have feet titled to the front.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Trademan, I would like Ms. Flanagan to address some of the concerns or the statements that you've made.
Don't know the exact basis. Applied for descent from CRMC to do physical operation. Full school. And butters, it's defined as 200 feet. Rights were aware of that. They asked Amy Silva, who is one of the administrators of she said that the rights contacted her and said they would be filing a request. They did not file a request for appearing to the so there was no, so the CRMC determined that no hearing was necessary. And they approved our ascent on administrative basis. So the butters, within the 200 feet of our it's CRMC followed their procedures. After that, our ascent, the rights said that they were able to or we did not begin construction until that appeal period expired into our knowledge. So I'm just reporting what CRMC has told me. I don't know if this is true for fact, but I'll be very much CRMC. But to our knowledge, we followed all the requirements. We did contact the police to find out if any permits were part of the town. Structures were being built, that it was fully CRMC's jurisdiction. Waterline with CRMC's jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hamley, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, actually I did. I just wanted to know if there was anybody else from the public that wanted to speak first? I know I'm very, very familiar with that area of Maple Road. Forty-five years ago, that used to be where we used to go hang out and drink beer and light a campfire. So that's, it's not like, maybe it's a secret that's coming back, but from the time I was 16 to the time I was 24, that was one of our main hangouts. I'm sure Joe remembers it as well. Uh, so it's not, it's not like, so it's not like this just popped out of the blue. You know, it's been like that forever. And I remember back then the town would put the shelves down because we'd spin our tires in the shells. So I knew, you know, it's been being maintained at least 45 years. So it's not really a secret. Uh, as far as kayakers, I mean, if you've got problems with, if I find a needle on my sidewalk, I'm not picking it up, I'm calling the cops. Say, hey, I found a needle on my sidewalk. So if you're finding needles there, you need to call the police. Let's get it documented and let's get it safely taken care of. Okay, the problem, and kayakers, if, I don't know how many kayakers are going to be using needles, uh, they won't be very good kayakers.
Kayabatic.
Well, yeah, but I don't think they'll throw their needles on the ground.
They won't.
Okay, so I don't really see an issue here. Actually, what I, what I really see here, a lot of, is NIMBY. Not in my backyard. And I, and I can feel your pain, but that is a right of way. Everybody is allowed to enjoy that right of way. Because you live next to it doesn't mean that other people can't enjoy that right of way. That's the law. And I don't think by adding a kayak rack, how many, four? Six kayaks is going to increase the problem. Now, if you are having these issues, I urge you to contact the police and keep them aware of it. Because if they're not aware of it, they can't do anything about it. But if you're finding needles and if there's litter, you know, maybe the chief increases patrols, they'll pay attention to the litter. If there's somebody down there making a racket at 11:30 at night, call the police. That's the problem. It's not, it's not the kayak rack, it's not the general public that's going down there, it's people doing things that they're not supposed to do. So that's, that's the issue. It's not the kayak rack, it's not that this right of way
Sit back down.
is not allowed to be there.
Sit, sit back down.
Because it's been there at least 45 years that I can personally attest to. The responsibility to the property owner is for the property owner to call the police and say, hey, I got a bunch of kids down here making a racket at 11:30, come down here and get rid of them. No, 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 no. And the land trust doesn't care if there's people down there at 11:30. It's not, they don't have tenants, they don't live there, they're not residents. You're a residential. Correct. But if there is a problem, if my neighbor was, had a fire pit going and was making too much noise, I'm gonna call the police.
Okay, Mr. Trademan, would you prefer that the land trust build a big, huge house there?
I would like to make a motion that we approve.
On a public hearing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. No, you are, you Okay, you have not successfully made that connection. I believe this body thinks that the kayak rack is an enhancement to the community and looks forward to the additional access to the water and the opportunity for people to enjoy that, that, that space and that natural, natural beauty. I do not believe that the land trust is in any way, shape or form responsible for the additional noise, litter, or anything going on down there. I think as Mr. Hamley very clearly just explained, that has always been a destination for people to do this. It is incumbent upon the people who are down there, who hear and see the problems happening, to call our police. They are just as responsible to you as they are to me. I call when there's fireworks being set off. I call when there's a, you know, a cat caught in a tree.
A dog's barking.
Or dogs barking. We are all, we all are enjoying the privileges and the services of living in this community. And that includes access to the water there. So I, I'm not certain, but I think we're ready to make
Just, I just, I need to bring out a couple of quick points and I will be brief. Appreciate, you've been very passionate, you spoke valle eloquently, but I am going to echo my fellow councilmen, the nexus is not connected. On the matter of public safety, police, fire, the chief of police, 32 years. Ed Cabral, our harbor master, retired from DEM, 25 years. I'm retired, 22 years from law enforcement. The first thing that they told us, when you went to a scene where fire apparatus had to get through, is don't get in their way. So I can assure you 100% that if fire apparatus need to get down to the bottom of Maple Road, they will get there. And we had Mr. Cabral testify that they were down there, no problem. My takeaway on your concerns about notice, I think it's been addressed. My takeaway on the litter, the drug paraphernalia, by all means, I implore you to call the police department. I am an individual that likes, I did, I understand it's gray, but I like the black and white of data. I have nothing before me. The police department has said nothing about complaints of drug arrest, drug paraphernalia, intoxicated individuals down at the bottom of Maple Road. So I implore you to please, if that's the case, then call. I guarantee you 100% they will respond. So unfortunately, I agree with my fellow councilmembers. The land trust is not the problem. The kayak racks are not going to be the problem. That public access right of way down there has existed forever. Three of us grew up going down there as children in high school. So I understand you, I appreciate your concerns, but if there's issue with litter and drugs and alcohol, call the police. That's all I have, ma'am.
Alrighty, so do we have a motion?
I will make a motion that we authorize the town college council president to sign the agreement with the town of Warren and the Warren Land Trust Conservation Trust to install the kayak rack at Maple Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, so that was OB two, right? Now we have OB three, which is discussion and action regarding the replacement of the East Bay Bike Path Bridges, update on Rideod's progress and timeline. I'd just like to make a motion that they do it and I'd like them to listen.
I'll second that motion.
I am not really enjoying the back and forth of it all. But Ms. Misha, would you please just give the council an update?
Sure. You have a memo in front of you dated September 8th, which was kind of the genesis for the agenda item, which was a newspaper article from August 30th where DOT indicated that they had not committed to replacing the East Bay Bike Path Bridges. Which was contrary to my understanding and what I had heard from DOT.
I heard too.
Read in the paper. Yeah, but I heard Mr. Alvedi clearly at the, when we were on that Zoom thing, he defended himself.
he defended himself a few times and, and stuck to it as there's nothing permanent being stated here. He did. I tried, we all tried to take him to task on it.
There was a subsequent meeting.
There was a subsequent meeting.
Clear statement that you were not part of.
It was a, it, the meeting was led off by, we have great news. We're going to replace the bridges.
Just the one I was at then?
Yes, so, long story short, and I, I want to keep this brief for obvious reasons. DOT, at this point, is saying that they have not committed to replacing the bridges. They put out a written update on Friday through their email blast that they've been sending out, saying that they have ten million dollars to complete the project. Their most recent estimate is fourteen million dollars for the work to be done. They are going to put out an RFP before the end of the year for this project to collect detailed costs data. Uh, it's my understanding that RFP will be posted for twelve weeks. At the end of that twelve-week period, they will have estimates and they will be able to determine if they can get the work done for the ten million dollars that they have. So I do not have a better update than that, but it is deeply disappointing that that's where we are.
I would like to see us keep the pressure on through, um, letters and calls and, um, oversight to, to the progress of this project. I think our representatives, um, need to keep the pressure on. Um, I would like a letter written to the governor, ensuring that he's aware of the, the situation and the length of time that we had to suffer the loss of the bike path bridges and the absolute deplorable condition of this so-called safe route that they are providing. Um, barriers for, uh, for cyclists and pedestrians. I think it's really sort of ironic that we just passed our, we, we passed that ordinance with no bikes on sidewalks and yet they're being encouraged on the sidewalks over the vehicular bridges. It's like, what? It makes no sense. And people are everywhere, driven by it. Some people are walking their bikes. Some people are riding their bikes. Some people are driving with the traffic. Some people are getting stuck in the dirt of what's ripped up. And there's like fifty people in, in reflective vests standing around. It's, it is a mess.
So what do we got to do? We're gonna, we're gonna send a letter in our strongest possible language encouraging DOT to follow through with their promise to replace those bridges?
I think, I mean, I need to be sure that the governor is well aware of what's going on here. And I think that there needs to be a letter that comes from the town of Warren, if the council approves me signing it and our representatives. There was a meeting last week. Okay.
And also, so move, is my, is my motion. I make a motion that we call the head of DOT, invite Barrington as well as Bristol, as well as every community that's on the bike path, and invite everybody, invite the governor and have him come here or come to a agreed-upon location for a meeting on, on that. I think letters are, are useless at this point. They should just open the bridges. There's nothing wrong with them. They're still standing.
Alright, that's, seems like a good plan of action.
I have an invitation. My motion is to, is to request the, the clerk to organize a meeting between the governor, the head of DOT, every elected official, or every town's elected officials on the bike path, especially the East Bay, to join in collaboration with a discussion on the future of the bike path bridges.
Okay, I love the idea of it. And, you know, in my, um, imagination, I can picture it. I don't know if in reality, how that's ever gonna happen. I don't know if I'm being pessimistic.
Maybe we should include in our, in, in that, uh, request, the title of our meeting, "In Support of Rebuilding the Bridges", because if it never happens, at least act as our official letter. And we are in support of rebuilding the bridges and we request a meeting between the governor, the head of DOT, and every elected, uh, member who wants to participate. And of course, I would like Mr. DeSisto's input and help on drafting the request.
May, may, well, actually, I think it's best if you refer it to the traffic commission, but I'd like to make a further suggestion. Invite all of the general officers of the state to.
And the federal delegation. How's that? See, we can get some federal funds to boost that ten million. So move.
Worth a, it's worth a shot. I'll second.
Alrighty, let's, we've got nothing to lose. We've already lost so much already. So I would support, you know, throwing it all at the wall and see what, what comes up. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I think we're gonna have, I think we'd have better luck if all the people in the audience and all the people listening calls in on Thursday morning to Gene Valicente's show when Alvedi's on the radio. If we just bombard him with calls, maybe he'll decide to pay us a little bit more attention.
Do that too.
I think it's Thursday morning at eight o'clock, Alvedi is on Gene Valicente's radio show. So call him up and drive him crazy.
Alright, well, thank you. NB one, discussion and action regarding the voluntary historic district board of appeals and the appeal process. So Solicitor DeSisto, we have had an opening, um, or two on that board for as long as I have been involved in, um, public service and, um, and in that same time, there has never been an appeal. It, and I understand that in other communities, appeals of this nature go to zoning. Is, is it, uh, do we have the opportunity to dissolve this board because it doesn't do anything? And it's just become this sort of, um, running joke? And, uh, transfer those responsibilities either to zoning or to planning? Whomever would be the better, um, body to address if there ever were an appeal to a decision that was made by the voluntary historic district? And Councilman.
Baseball hat.
No, I actually came up, I came in suited. Jason Knight was like, I can't believe you came in suited. That's okay.
In any event, uh, that project was very critical, um, for the county water plans. Obviously, dam infrastructure, as it does accommodate our plans with, you know, raising the schoolhouse road and installing the culverts, uh, is critical for that work to go forward. And back in February, you heard a very detailed presentation given by our design consultants, our corporation, uh, the projects. And where we are today is, all this past summer, Park Corp has been working on the very detailed process of, of putting applications together to respective state agencies, uh, to DEM, uh, CRM C, so, uh, those applications were just recently submitted about a few weeks ago. And as part of that process, uh, following their initiative review, to make sure that all the materials that they expect to be in the applications there, they will be issuing, um, citations and notices to all the project divots, uh, including the town and any other organizations for public comments. And, you know, we expect, you know, some, probably a lengthy process involved. But I wanted to, uh, let you know that, uh, they must, that that process has, has continued. And, um, at this point, I would say best guess, because I think it's gonna be a lengthy process, uh, it all goes well. And we do receive favorable response to those organizations. The engineers have been, have identified the first, uh, project would be the lower D. And, uh, possibly as, as early as next September. Maybe it'll go forward into the spring, depending on how long. On that word, then we. Would you put the, uh, culverts in first, then? Well, DOT is moving forward with the cover project now, right? So, and that's gonna be done in, uh, this coming spring. So with that, I don't have anything else. I wasn't gonna give you a whole lengthy thing. Um, there's been no changes since that presentation, that the information that you have on your website, that presentation is, it's still, is still balanced, still good.
We being saved the bay? We meaning both of you?
Okay, thank you. And I should add that we continue to garner support, variety of private agencies, groups. Uh, I appreciate the support that provided. Water, this endeavor, uh, has a lot of work, there's been programs that have been applied for. We recently received additional branches recently from an organization called Restore Marked Destuaries. So today we've, we've, um, have over one point four million dollars in grant.
That would be wonderful. Really wonderful. Thank you so much for staying the course and your, uh, positive presentation. Really good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Alrighty, NB four, discussion and action regarding approval for historic marker installations. So we have, um, we have, who is going, we have Sandy Scott and we have, um, Brock Singwald. So there's the two different historic markers. One is the, uh, that one has our acknowledgement or land acknowledgement statement that will go in front of town hall. And the other one is the, um, early Warren and the start of the King's Middle School or, uh, that will go up by the Community Unit Middle School. Are we aware if last night's, uh, school committee meeting, uh, approved the placement? Do we know this with all of the upheaval?
I have a question regarding that.
Yes.
I think that there's a, i- is it the most thought-out spot in regards to eyes seeing it? Because one of my, uh, other than people who cross the street there, the students, if it were to be put on the town land at the bike path where the pavilion is, you'd have thousands of people being able to get access to this information that are never going to be on the corner of child. And, uh, I mean, honestly, that's corner right there are probably fifteen kids that cross the street to the neighborhood across the street. And you don't need anybody's permission but ours right now, tonight.
Yeah. I know there, there was a different spot originally considered and that, for reasons due to parking and traffic, didn't make sense. And pardon my ignorance, but, uh, does, would the, uh, location that Councilman DeSquall, uh, suggests still be within the, the region of the start of the actual?
Closer.
It's, is it closer?
Well.
So even.
The house was.
It's closer to. Oh, so, well, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I think that, that makes a, a lot of sense. Alright. If we could identify a spot that would be, um, be more, uh, pedestrian, bike, you know, just traffic and, and. You know, we can do the QR code or it's, it's already there and, you know, we can promote it on the various historic.
I'm sure Mr. Malas has a spot.
Gonna dig that hole before you go. Alright.
I'll make a motion, we approve the installation of the historic markers. Final location to be determined by.
Committee.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Um, and, and you say historic markers, uh, plural, because the other is the land acknowledgement. And, and you say historic markers plural, because the other is the land acknowledgements.
Correct. We, we were able to raise money for that.
Okay.
Town doesn't. Next budget cycle to do it, so we can get it up this fall.
Great.
One of them will use the hardware that was purchased for the last one that went on Baker Street that we just reused that, that that stand. So, so that's good. And then the, the full editing of the content of this will happen over the course of. All right.
And I just wanted to mention that we raised money for that. We've got lots of donations from the members of the so, because they thought it was so important. They were so appreciative of your they wanted to make sure it got up fast.
Well, we appreciate their, the, the work that that committee did and then their generosity giving to this. And so we have a motion and a second.
Yes, you do.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. NB five, discussion and action regarding school resource officer for Kikimewa Middle School. Again, I don't really know what actually to take. I don't know where the situation stands at this point. It's been somewhat rising the way notice was given that the resource officer should not appear at the school. Yet, what's happening?
So again, I will, I will be brief. First, the finance director and then the, the police chief received telephone correspondence just before the start of school that the school department did not in fact have funding in place to pay their portion of the SRO for the current school year. You remember that the current arrangement that was memorialized through an MOU that was signed by both the town and the school department had a cost sharing. Fifty percent of the cost was to be covered through grant funds that would come to the school department and then serve as reimbursement to the town. And then for the school year, 25% of the cost would be covered by the town and 25% of the cost would be covered by the school district. And then for the non-school months, the town would cover 100% of the cost. And that's what's happened for the last two years. Unfortunately, we had not received payment from the school district in quite some time. So it's my understanding, or I know that they have a new finance director who had reviewed the invoices that had been received by the town throughout that time period, had acknowledged that there is a balance due and has taken action to rectify that past balance. At that time, he notified us in, in August that the school department was notified on, at the end of June, that the grant program had been discontinued and not approved by the legislature for the current fiscal year. So as it's, and in addition, he indicated that the school department did not have adequate funding to, to fund that 25% share either. So as it stands right now, we, we are not sure what the future of this position is with regard to school department funding. We know that the grant funding is not coming. I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. I think it's public information that there's, there's staffing changes occurring at the school department. So it's a difficult time for them to be making decisions. But we will be scheduling a meeting to discuss this specific issue with attorney desisto, with the town, the school department's attorney, with the police chief to work through this issue and find out what the ask is for the town of Warren. Because at this point, I do not know.
And we do not know whether the school committee's opinion about the school resource officer is purely financial in supporting it continuing, or if they even just happily don't want that position. They, they have not had public.
They haven't weighed in on it?
No. Not, no. So we don't even know what the school committee wants. They have not expressed.
Which action was it that terminated the position? Or stopped the person from going to the position?
We sent them. We, I, I corresponded with Diane Santa, who is the assistant superintendent, who is available at the time. And we corresponded back and forth and I said, if this is purely a funding issue at this point, we are going to send the school resource officer until we can resolve this once and for all. I would rather err on the side of incurring those costs rather than not send the SRO, have something happen and then.
What I'm questioning is how did we even find out?
We, we found.
How did the person know that they weren't supposed to be there?
Well, Chief Board just received a phone call.
From who?
The superintendent, Bob Hicks. May I weigh in a little bit?
Well, I just want to know the facts, because if the school committee says they had nothing to do with it, well, the superintendent works for the school committee.
So, Madam President, if I may.
You may.
Okay. I had received the text message, so I have to back this up a little bit. I had received the text message from the attorney for the school committee, Mary Ann Carroll, asking me if the school committee approved a budget more than what the JFC appropriated, does the JFC have to know? So I responded back to her. This was like eight o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday. How much more? You know, why did they do this? And we should probably talk. So we called, she chatted, she said, the school committee approved the budget, a million dollars more to use the fund balance. So I said, okay, I'm going to make an appointment with the interim superintendent and the CFO. I did. As I was driving to that meeting, I get a text message saying, oh, by the way, the SRO was canceled. I called the chief of police. I said, chief, can you give me a little update? He goes, for some reason, there's a notice saying the SRO is not funded. I didn't have all the information at that time. When I get to the meeting, they tell me that they received an email from RIDE indicating that the fund was not approved through the state legislature and it ended June 31st, so July 1st. We have that meeting. I leave, I come back, I go back the next day. This is September 2nd, so we don't know what happened on September 2nd. And they were like, yeah, the fund was stopped. It was supposed to be for three years, but it was only funded for two years. The legislature didn't read no it. And the three years actually started July, June, I'm sorry, 2018, even though we jumped in late, 2019 or the end of 2018. So it actually backdated to 2018. So as far as they were concerned, 2021, it ended. Our calendar was a little off. And I'm paraphrasing because I'm not reading off of my text messages, but that's pretty much how we were notified. So my message to the superintendent was, well, the SRO should still go there. We still need how to figure out how to pay for this. Then I had a couple of calls with Kate and this is where we're at now.
Unless, of course, the school committee says we vote to not have this position in progress.
If they, if it's unilateral action, that's what, that's what I hope the reason why you're standing up. Because somebody has to have the authority to do this or the responsibility for it, and it shouldn't have to do with the funding source.
Yeah, it is a, that's correct.
And all due respect to Mr. Kalenda, but I don't think he should have been contacted by whoever did contact you because as, your, your duties already been done as JFC.
I, I agree.
As the head of JFC.
Yeah.
That phone call would have, I would have hung up and said, call the person you're supposed to call, the school committee. So I think there's, unfortunately, from what I'm hearing now, there's been some sidestepping taking place.
The, one of the issues that we're trying to, is some difficulty finding out exactly when we made this decision. That's, that's your legal counsel telling you that, because I was contacted by the legal counsel. And that difficulty that we're running into, this contract that the allegation is that they didn't know of. You know, I relayed that information to Kate. She sent back the information, but this was discussed at the various levels of the school department, including the school committee. So I hear your comments are correct. We need to pin this down. Unfortunately, the question is, is we actually talking to the short of the school committee. We have to sort it out. It's going to take some more.
There's no funding for it.
Well, we funded our.
There's no, there's no grant funds that started this process. But this, if I'm correctly remembering, this was a sunset on funding, not the position. So all this is doing is bringing us to a quicker reality of where we would be. We, we were going to be funding this. We simply had the benefit of participating in a grant, which was the stimulus of this.
Right, but this, the school department was going to pay 25%. That, they're reneging on that now.
My point, but, but the whole, we didn't get into this and say, and on the third year, we'll then just, you know, quit and figure out what to do next. No, this was a position of perpetuity, at least that's by the bodies participating.
Yeah, that, that's not entirely correct. This was because of a sick out at the KMS, and the school committee requested the SRO. This is not something that was originated with the town council, Donald Warren.
No, no, no. This agreement to participate now was, I remember when it came in front of us. We were all excited about the original startup money, the, the fund, the grant, the cooperation between the two towns. The reality that there wasn't someone there when the problems were becoming bigger than the children, that, that we had kind of realized that, that there was a need. So I'm not questioning that this was started in any other way than what it was. It absolutely became byproduct of that sick out, maybe, but calendar wise, there had to be a matching fund that we weren't taking advantage of. But we didn't enter into this simply because of the grant, or else we would have said, all right, well, we'll do it for three years. And then after that, everything's going to be, no reason for an officer.
The memorandum of agreement that was signed does say that the, at the end of the three years, on June 30th of '22, that all parties will agree on what the future actions to be. It left it open as to whether or not that position would continue or not after that June 30th, 2020.
I guess the key is all parties.
Right.
One phone call from one person to Mr. Kalenda explaining why somebody's not there, I think somebody dropped the ball. We just take responsibility for moving this forward, but I think our children should be still protected. And I think we should reach out to Bristol.
Again, the school committee needs to make a, needs to have a public discussion.
On this issue?
This issue. And I don't know what they discussed last night at their meeting. It's mostly an executive session. I looked at the agenda and the SRO was not on.
So do you want a motion in the form of a letter to express those concerns?
Anthony, what action, it says discussion and action. What action do you need us to take to, to keep you being able to do what you need to do?
In a motion.
So.
Second.
Yes.
I mean, the.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The safety of the, of the children and the staff is still there, we're concerned.
Right. And, and to be clear, that, that SRO is reporting, we are sending.
Oh, good. Oh.
That was going to be my follow up.
Right, because.
She said that, yeah.
The. The establishment of the SRO was a deliberate process that was, you know, that was put in writing and signed off by the party. So my opinion is if, if that was to discontinue, it should be the same deliberative process with a written document. With the same people, exactly.
All right. So next will be the town manager and update on process reuse of American Rescue Plan funding. At what time? Do we have to make a motion to keep going because we've got one, two, three, four, five, six? So not till 11? All right.
We will absolutely be done by then. I, I will be very fast because you will be able to find all this information tomorrow morning on the town's website. We are working with a consultant, as you know, about the allowable spending on the American Rescue Plan. We, through that process, we have established some potential projects that could be funded that are, fall within the guidelines of the American Rescue Plan. The next stage of this process, as required by, by US Treasury, is that we solicit public input. Tomorrow morning, a survey, a public survey will be launched online. We will have links on the town's website. We are also going to place an advertisement in the newspaper with a QR code. People can scan the code, go right to the survey and express their preference among these activities that we know are allowable. It's also going to have some open comment space, so people can, can provide comment or alternative ideas in the, in that section. Understanding that there are very strict limits on the, the spending.
The final decision with the council?
The final decision is with the council. And the next action that'll happen is that in October, I will return to you with our consultants and give you a detailed presentation on both the projects that we would like you to consider and also the, the public preferences that we've received through the, through the survey.
Are numbers associated with the survey, like in any way, like?
It's just topics, because the budgets have not been set. Right, the budgets are flexible. So we don't.
Survey mandated in this?
It is. Well, public, public outreach is required and the, the survey seems to be a best practice at this point.
These thoughts, okay, because it doesn't seem like our ordinary proposal process.
Right. This is a, a clear way to, to solicit public input.
So is there, is there any indication of the dollar amount that is available?
Yes. So we have already received two payments. We received, in July, we received $550,085, and that was a municipal payment. And at the, the very last day of August, we received a payment of $1,028,190, and that was the county payment. In 2022, you know, late summer, early fall 2022, we expect to receive those payments again. So we'll receive another $550,085 for municipal and we'll receive another $1,028,190 for county funds, for a total of $3,141,808. So we have not spent anything. We will not spend anything without council approval. But just wanted to update you on the process and urge everyone to go online and to complete the survey, because the more survey results we have, the better. And please start thinking about your questions for the October meeting, when we will have a full presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Finance Director, revenues and expenditures. Chan. Nice to see you.
Do you have any question? We are relatively.
Any, any pending issues that you see or everything looking like where we're supposed to be?
So far it is except for SRO, as you see, budget, they've budgeted 25% of our. Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, as always.
Thank you. Next, Department of Public Works, discussion and action regarding roof repair for the portion of the town hall roof located over the fire department training room and public master's office. We have a document here. The packet.
It's not like a rubber roof wasn't recommended. A rubber roof wasn't recommended. Yeah. Right, but I think it's going to be gravel still, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's how they do it? All right. I was, I wasn't sure if we're still at Asper. In Fox and Spaces. I just got a question on that.
Funding sources?
Yeah, I think we wrapped in the eaves, the painting, the roof on the governor's center. I'm not positive, but it's been a while.
Yes, we also have other general repair funds that we can utilize for the balance. So it's all existing funds.
So is the amount 31,850 or is it 28,400?
28,400.
Okay.
I will make a motion when we approve the, his to town hall and the amounts of $28,420.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Town court, discussion and action and authorization for the town.
Can we do the planning community development first?
No, no. I put a check there as if we had done it, and that means it's done. Sorry. Planning and community development, authorization for the town manager to enter into professional services contract with Allison Ray to assist the director of the Office of Planning and Community Development and the Planning Board to update a comprehensive plan from account 0301213002, that's the planner account.
Correct. So it hasn't been updated since 2003. There was an attempt to update it, I think in 2010, 2011, plan was completed. Plan was completed, but the previous planner never submitted that to statewide planning. As we move forward with, you know. Some of the initiatives, particularly the Medicom market to Medicom initiative with zoning changes. Before we can make any of those zoning changes, we need to have the comprehensive plan updated. Ms. Ring is the. Planner for New Shore and Block Island. She does that on a part-time basis. She lives in Bristol. She's assisted other communities in the preparation of of comprehensive plans. I'm very comfortable working with her. The planning board is anxious to get this done. I just don't have the bandwidth for everything else that I'm doing to take on this alone, so.
Bandwidth, huh?
Well, we. We're on broadband. So I mean, I I think that, you know. This will help us get this done within probably one calendar year, which. I think is a reasonable expectation.
Yes.
So Mr. Really. Will this. It's a guarantee to complete.
I'd like to think so, yes. Yeah, we we I mean, we can't move forward with anything we want to do on Medicom for redevelopment without updating the comprehensive plan.
It's not like a higher shmoon.
Well, we had higher shmoon. Yeah, we we're not able to move forward with any of the things we want to do with special revitalization districts or any of this until. The update to comprehensive plan and that's included in there. We've had meetings with statewide planning. We're going to take a little different approach to how we do the comprehensive plan. It's going to be more of a corridor plan. Because it's going to be focused on on Medicom, but we're in agreement with that, but. And we have many of the elements already done. You know, we've we have a high hazard mitigation and flood mitigation plan that's almost complete. That can be put into this, but. I just need an extra set of hands to help me some of the other sections.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Yes, thank you.
Use your bandwidth.
All of it. All right. Moving on to town clerk, discussion and action and authorization for the town council president to sign the contract with clerk face. For onboard subscription for management of boards and commissions in the amount of two thousand dollars.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, wait, we screwed that all up. Wow, did we miss that one up? We got the second and I called for a vote. That was pretty bad.
It's fine. I proclaim it official. We have approved your two thousand dollars. On number two, we're going to be really. Clear about it. Discussion, action and authorization for the town council president to sign the contract with clerk face. For retrieval system, town council agenda and minutes processing in the amount of three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. This is budgeted. I have these contracts right here.
I will make a motion. We approve. Allow the approve the contract and authorize the town council president to sign it in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Next. Second, yep.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.